Everybody, please rise for prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us in everyone who serves this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the stay of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We'll now do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the spirit of liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the robe.
Counselor Millinazzo.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
That's nine present.
Thank you. All right, we have the minutes to approve.
Your Honor.
Point one, yes?
Thank you. I'd just like to offer, sure, a moment of silence for Waymouth Police Sergeant Michael Chesna and Vera Adams. And, uh, can we just all remember the sacrifices that, um, our first responders made for us? Thank you.
Thank you, that's well noted, thank you. Dimminalize, please. Yes, Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there's no objection, I would ask that we suspend the rules in order to take item 8.1 out of order.
Second.
Pick it up at this time.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, 8.1. This is a report from the Education Partnership Subcommittee of July 19, 2018, for Project Learn. And, okay.
Yes, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Your report.
The Educational Partnership Subcommittee met recently and, um, and there was a presentation made on Project Learn. And rather than to give the report of the Subcommittee, I invited the members who gave the presentation on that evening to come here tonight, um, to give the presentation again. So, um, I believe there are several members here, so if we could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to them.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher, Attorney Gallagher.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Michael Gallagher, and I live at 200 Middle Street in historic downtown Lowell. I'm here as a board member of Project Learn, and along with Executive Director LZ None and founding member Brian Martin, we are here to thank you for your past support and to provide a snapshot of what PL, what Project Learn has been doing lately, and with your continued support, we'll hopefully be able to continue to do. As those of you who, as I look around, most of you are veterans of the political scene, but I see Counselor Cirillo, who's relatively new to the scene. As those of you who've been around for a lot of years know, this is the 25th anniversary of the Landmark Education Reform Act. And at the very first meeting, and I remember this because I was old enough to be in the audience at that time, at the very first meeting of the Joint Education Committee, which was to write that bill, the committee's co-chair's very first utterance was to spell the word "access." And what he meant was that truly quality public schools provide access to a full and rich life for all Lowell students, all students. Now, in the intervening 25 years, in this incredibly fast-moving information age, it's clear that access, just opening the door, is not enough. That to keep pace and to succeed, our students here in Lowell need the kinds of opportunities historically available only to some of our suburban neighbors and to the well-financed private schools in the area. About five years ago, three of our very involved citizens literally knocked on the doors of about 20 local businesses, seeking multi-year monetary pledges in support of an idea. And the idea was to privately raise funds to help close the gap and level the playing field, to help provide those kinds of opportunities previously unavailable to them. And Project Learn was born. Five years later, just five years later, with the close collaboration of many Lowell school administrators and teachers, and the support of all of our political leaders, including all of you here, Project Learn has helped raise over $7 million. And LZ will briefly itemize the opportunities now available to Lowell public school students. Project Learn has made such an impact that recently, the Secretary of Education here in the Commonwealth remarked that it was the only program of its type across the Commonwealth, and he was going to do his best to try to get other communities to emulate us. So I want to thank, we want to thank all of you. Manager Donahue and former Senator Donahue, who's been very supportive of these efforts, Mayor Samaras, of course, who has as well, Mayor Kennedy, former Mayor Kennedy, Counselor Kennedy, who was chair of the Subcommittee, Counselor Conway, who made the motion early on, way back, to assist us in moving forward. And in fact, all of you, many of you sat as school committee members. And those who didn't, I know, have been very involved in improving public education here in our schools. So thank you for that support, and please bear witness as we very quickly show you a little video, LZ is going to do that, explaining some of the opportunities that Project Learn has helped make available for Lowell students. LZ?
Thank you very much, Michael. And thanks for this opportunity for us to get to share a little bit of what we've been so excited to accomplish with our Lowell public schools. So I'm just going to walk you through a few slides, just to give you a sense of the work we've been doing and what we're so thrilled to have been able to accomplish. So, our vision at Project Learn is similar to what Michael said, you know, it's about access. Our vision is that all young people in Lowell deserve the opportunity to learn, succeed, and thrive. And our aim is to make the Lowell public schools a national model for urban education, and we think we can do it. Our mission is that every single Lowell student should have access to a world-class education. And so, working hand in hand with the Lowell public schools, we fund innovative programs and services to equip them with the skills, knowledge, and mindset they need to succeed in college, career, and life. And here's a quick snapshot of our current program. So, what do we support in the schools? So with support of our colleagues across the public school system, both, you know, our district principals, our educators, administrative staff, we seek funding for programs that aren't extras. These are complementary and supplementary to the essential day-to-day learning that happens across the Lowell public schools. So programs like Makerspaces at Lowell High School, so that every single ninth-grade student gets to spend a week exploring integrated life sciences and make a model of DNA double helix using CAD software, 3D printers, and touchscreen technology. We'd love to take you on a tour of that, if you haven't seen it. Or programs like Farm to Schools, which provides students a hands-on way to learn about life sciences, biology, healthy eating. Or the PALS mentoring program that provides students who might be at risk of dropping out an opportunity with one-on-one mentors, job shadowing, pay-to-internships, and critical career readiness support. And when you add it all up, the impact is $7.7 million raised for high-quality innovative programs that go directly to our Lowell students, 14,500 of them. And here's a little bit about how those impacts of the $7 million break down. So, early childhood and elementary education, these would be things like literacy programs, our Book Nook project, which you'll hear a little bit more about, elementary counseling, uh, you know, programs that range across professional development for Lowell teachers, and that's $1.8 million. $1.2 million for programs like STEM summer learning programs, Makerspaces, Farm to School, laptop and technology upgrades for middle schoolers, professional development and Idea Camp, and $3.1 million for college and career readiness, things like our PALS mentoring program, Career Academy, Life Sciences Makerspace at the high school, the Lowell Career Pathways Program. As a matter of fact, many of you might have heard, was featured recently in an educational publication called The Heckinger Report. And the Lowell High Pathways Program really allows students to get hands-on training and focused curriculum in areas ranging from culinary arts to business and finance, marketing, engineering, health sciences, and clean energy. And for many of our students, it's the pathways programs that makes learning engaging and even fun, and according to that report, really helping them stay on track to graduate. So who are our partners in education? Who's helped us raise that $7 million figure for the Lowell schools? It's everyone that you see on the screen and more, you know, folks like the Cummings Foundation, U.S. Department of Agriculture, U.S. Department of Education, Mass. D.C., Eastern Bank, Trinity, you know, all of these partners have really been instrumental in stepping up and helping support the day-to-day learning that you'll get to see. And here's a quick video about our Book Nook program. If I can get it to run. This is the tricky part. Thank you. Well, let's see if this works a little better. Well, I'm sorry that didn't work, but I'll just tell you about the program. 10,000 books each year are going out to Lowell public school students through 15 book nooks across our community partner locations, places like the Lowell Boys and Girls Club, Coalition for a Better Acre, Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association, CTI. So many of these organizations said, "We want to host a specially handcrafted bookshelf made by UTEC, which gives out free books to kids." Eastern Bank has been an amazing partner with us, providing free support for storage for these books. And, and we just recently did an event where over 600 kids and families came to get a free book and participate in literacy programs. This has really been a game changer for engaging our younger learners, and we know that our goal is to make an impact on school readiness, and it takes a village. The program requires about 150 volunteers, people host book drives, participate in bringing books in, they do book sortings, and 38 partner organizations. So, uh, it's really been a testament to the whole community kind of raising and providing access to our kids. And as you can see, City Manager, former Senator Donahue, participated in one of our events last year at Eastern Bank, she was reading to a group of students. But, um, I think just to reiterate what Mr. Gallagher said, you know, this is a really, Project Learn has been a really unique model for the city. No other gateway in Massachusetts has something like Project Learn that can raise and leverage private support, public dollars, to the betterment for every single student. And, um, and just another quick snapshot, the research shows that an engaged community makes your schools better. And, um, to support that, the Nellie Mae Education Foundation has given us a three-year pilot program to work on authentic school-community engagement. And the program that we've developed with about 50 different community partners is called Your Voice Matters. And it really is tapping the ideas, energy, and resources of our entire community. And we've engaged over 700 parents and families and educators, trained 20 community facilitators, including, 10 of those will be youth facilitators, will be trained this week at Lowell Community Health Center, hosted two community-wide forums, 14 community circle conversations in every neighborhood. And, um, we will be launching this September a reinvigorated citywide family council, and also co-hosting a youth forum with Lowell Community Health Center. And just a quick snapshot of programs, you've heard about our Book Nooks and Your Voice Matters. We also work with Lowell High Alumni, and we'll have 25 speakers this year participate in our Career Pathways Program and speak about their career path to give students access to a vision of what their future could look like. We also work with the Career Academy, which has graduated 66 graduates just from 16 and 18, and served over 2,000 families and students. And our Clean Energy Program provided 22 hands-on clean-energy career internship-like experiences for our students. So just a quick recap, you know, $7 million is the amount that we've raised for over 14,000 students each year. The Book Nook Program provides 10,000 or probably close to 12,000 this year books for local kids. Across 16 programs, we've got two STEM Makerspaces, 3,000 families have been engaged across all programs, and a total of 115 career-based experiences. So, um, we've been proud to really work so collaboratively with a lot of partners in our community for this effort. And we have just over a million pending for career internship expansion, college readiness, and education pathways. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brian Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and our manager and our city councilors. John Haley is the Chair of Project Learn. Everyone knows John, he's a Lowell High graduate and the owner of Watermark and a great advocate for public schools. And, uh, he tells the story that without his teachers in his last year or two at Lowell High School, particularly Arthur O'Neil, Mike Sokolowski, and Brendan Sullivan, for a lot of the Lowell folks, they know exactly who that is, they're just great people who cared about kids. John believes he never would have gone to college. And, uh, they inspired him, they believed in him, and as he wobbled, like many do, their junior and senior years, including me, you have people that believe in you beyond your family, belong beyond your larger support system, that just think you can make it, and they inspire young people to go on. And John tells that story passionately about how it made a difference in his life. And there were literally hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of students that would tell you that same story from their teachers. So I'm here in behalf of John and the original board. Mike Gallagher mentioned the founders, George Duncan and Ken Wallace and myself, who began this project, because we're all Lowell High grads, and we believe that there's got to be another way to support the schools outside of the public money that typically gets spent on education. And with George Duncan and Ken Wallace, we convinced Louis Pedrosa, another Lowell High grad, to jump on board, and Michael Gallagher to jump on board, and Nancy Donahue to jump on board, and Carol Cowan, who now is followed by Jim Avery, Jack O'Connor, Ray Anstis, and many others that have followed. So we stand on the original group's shoulders because they were terrific to get us started. We were all over the place trying to figure out just how do we fit, how do we make a difference, how do we collaborate, and to Susan Lynn, the original executive director, and now LZ None, who is absolutely fabulous. I think we found our way. But here we are now with five-plus years in, and we've never asked for a penny from the public side. We've raised $7.7 million with grants, with private funds. Everyone should know that every board member contributes to Project Learn, contributes their own private money to keep the organization going, and everyone is totally supportive of it. But, at the end of the day, the programs that LZ spoke about are making a huge difference. Let me give you an example. We have a young man, David Nyhan, who is a bright, bright, when I say bright, bright kid, who just fell in love with the Makerspace. He's interested in engineering, if he doesn't go to MIT, I don't think I know anyone that would go to MIT. But the Makerspace was privately funded with grants from Verizon, and now every freshman has an opportunity to spend time there with the computer, with CAD to design. So David Nyhan, actually, when I retired, made a clock for me, and I'm going to just hand it out so everyone can see it, pass it around. LZ, did you break this? I'll just pass this piece. He made a clock with the CAD computer and the equipment in the Makerspace and painted it, and that was his little project after school with his teacher. I mean, those kinds of experiences are invaluable. Every kid isn't going to play a sport or be part of an activity after school that are the typical ones in performing arts or music or athletics. But there's some talented, talented young people that every time we have an opportunity for these kids to explore, to be challenged, to use the ability that they have in a different way, is making a huge difference for Lowell High School. And that young man, I'm telling you, we're going to hear about him someday. And so, I wanted to close to just say thank you for your support. I think that this organization has momentum now to continue to provide support for the public schools. And in five years, $7.7 million is something we're very proud of, and at the end of the day, we still need to keep going. We need to sustain the organization, and with your support, I think we can do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to thank the three speakers for coming down. I think they did a great job, they did a great job at the Subcommittee meeting, and I would like to put forth the following motion. I'd like to request that the City Manager consider the ways and means necessary to appropriately, to provide an appropriate level of municipal support for Project Learn going forward.
I second it.
Second by Counselor Cirillo. All in favor? Thank you. Anything else?
That's it, but I think 8.1 also includes the second Subcommittee report as well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we'll come back to that one. We have Counselor Leahy, then Counselor Conway. Counselor Leahy?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank, uh, Project Learn for being here tonight. You know, going back a number of years ago, as you know, Mr. Mayor, that school department is always running into financial difficulties, and one of the things that certainly helps us is try to maximize our resources, and that's usually through partnerships. And I have found that throughout my career, that partnerships were extremely important. And when I take a look, when I was on the school committee, I took a look at the fact that the school department actually did very well getting grants, getting monies from the state and from the federal, the federal source. The only thing is, I said to myself, there are other monies out there, foundation money, private money, corporate money, and these are things that we haven't tapped into. And, uh, I decided to put a motion on at that time, and I think people thought I was a little crazy, to have a grant writer that was going to be financed strictly by the business community for the purpose of the Lowell public schools. And, um, I asked the superintendent if she mind if I brought some people to the table, and I would seek their advice and see if it made any sense or not. And, uh, the three names that Brian Martin just mentioned, Brian was the original, along with George Duncan and Kendall Wallace, and we asked Eileen Donahue to step up to help us with the legal matters in case we ran into some problems. And, uh, I can honestly say that I'm very, very proud of that program because these three individuals went out, not only raised the money, but also sought support from community leaders, and I think that's what brings us here today. And we take a look at well over $7 million that comes from these different sources other than city and state for the purpose of helping our kids, our 14,000 kids in the, uh, in our school system. So again, I congratulate, I congratulate Project Learn, and I congratulate all the people that over the years have spent the time, the effort, the energy, and also the monies to put this together. Thank you.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say this, I think that, you know, when we talk about Lowell High School and the students are at Lowell High School, everybody takes a lot of pride in the students that get accepted to the elite colleges, or students that show great academic achievement. But the real measure of how we're doing at Lowell High School is how are we serving all of the kids and all of the students? And so, there are students who need something like this. I think that, um, when Mr. Martin spoke, he pointed that out, that there are kids in the past, and there are kids now, and there will be students in the future that will benefit from something like Project Learn. So, you know, and I realize that this is a, it's a tight budget that we have, but I do think this is a deserving program, and certainly if the City Manager can find some money someplace, I think that, um, I think that everybody on the City Councils should be willing to support that. And I would point out that this City Council is a little bit unique, I think, in that seven of the nine members of the City Council have served on the school committee in some capacity. And so, I'm certain that at least seven or all nine of the City Councils have a keen interest in making sure that every student at Lowell High School gets as much opportunity as they can, and that this, that Project Learn helps to provide part of that opportunity for some students. Thank you. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and thank you for bringing it before the subcommittee on education. I think Councilor Conway and myself can say with pride that we have coming from the high school as to this work, but I want to thank Attorney Gallagher, you know, former headmaster Martin, Elsie Nun, and President Mayberry for coming in for support here. Without your effort, we'd be a good school system, but what you're going to help us do is become a superior school system, not a good urban system, but I think with work like this, we're just going to be a great educational system. And that's what I feel every city councilor here wants to stand for. So thank you for your presentation tonight. Appreciate it. Any other further discussion in that matter? Yes, Councilor Leahy?
Not discussion on that. While we're still under the suspension, should we take 10-6 up while people are here?
10-6.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think under 8.1, we still have another subcommittee report.
Yes. What I'd like to do is go back to that at the end for a report, okay? Do it all at once. Thank you. Councilor Leahy, 10.1?
Yes.
Thank you. You have speak, we have speakers on the dam?
Well, that's their motion, but I don't know if the speaker's here.
Well, the thing is, let's review the motion then. We have a subcommittee report on the environment flood issues.
10-6.
Oh, 10.6. I thought you said 10.1. I'm sorry. We have a motion, 10.6, by Councilor Elliott. Councilor Mercer doesn't need a second request. City council vote to prevent further permits from being issued for gas line work in the city. Do we have some registered speakers?
I don't have any registered speakers.
We don't have any registered speakers?
No, we don't, but we have people here, and I have Jim Mariolis. He's here as the Vice President of Local 12012, and if there's any questions, that he would be willing to answer them. But there's no need for a second, but thank you for taking this out of order for, under suspension. So my comments to this motion are, we all know by now that USW Local 12012 gas workers from the Rock Street facility are being locked out of their jobs. These are men and women. They are constituents who want to work. These are professional gas workers that are being treated like second-class citizens. These gas workers are not negotiating a contract, making exorbitant requests or outrageous proposals. They were told by their employers that they will no longer have health insurance. Now picture the man or woman that's worked, well, there was one particular man, I'm only giving you one example, but I talked to quite a few. He works 34 years, and over time, he has developed a medical condition that requires him to be on expensive medications, and now he will no longer have a way to pay for his medications. He will have no health insurance coverage, and I can't believe that this is happening. I spoke to other people that worked there many, many years, and their family members that are covered, especially the spouses under the, this health issue will not be covered either. Now the people coming onboard will have no pensions being offered to them. The company, National Grid, I mean, Grid, wants to increase four-inch pipes to six-inch pipes or even eight-inch pipes, and hire inexperienced workers. This is a concern to me and imposes an unsafe danger to the public. Inexperienced workers are changing gas meters, and I'm very nervous about this. My concern is safety. I do not want to be the one responsible for any gas leakage dangers or problems associated with inexperienced workers. Therefore, I, along with Councilor Elliott, I can't speak for him, but we have the motion together, we would request that the city deny further permits from being issued for future gas line work in the city. So that's the gist of my motion, and I'd like to hear from Councilor Elliott. Thank you.
Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Council Mercer said it all. It came to my attention that work is, work continues to be done and permits are being issued outside of the projects that we voted against, so I wanted to make it clear to the workers. And I think Council Mercer really highlighted one significant issue, find there were negotiations that broke down, but when a company sends out a notice that they're canceling healthcare, that is at every level wrong. And negotiations, we can't agree on everything, but when you start taking healthcare away from families, that's where we got to draw the line, and that's where I draw the line. You get a company that's making billions of dollars, and, you know, to me, they're just, they threaten their workers, and the last straw for me was the healthcare issue. So that's why I filed this motion, and many other communities are following suit. So, including one of the biggest communities where we see incredible growth, the city of Boston. So I want to stand firm on our commitment to not let any further work proceed, and the way to do that, it was through this motion. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to support the motion also because, you know, couldn't say anything more than what Councilor Mercer and Councilor Elliott said. Here's a company that makes billions and millions of dollars, and they can't even come up with a decent contract for their workers. It's, you know, it's just not right, and this is something that we need to do as a city to support them. Thank you.
Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great motion. I know that the concern for us is not only that, you know, we want to see a contract being produced between the National Grid and the worker, but furthermore, the National Grid went on to take, as Councilor Elliott indicated, that took away the healthcare for the worker and the family. For me, in addition to that, it's also they replaced this worker with, you know, other workers. The issue for me is more than anything else, is the safety of the customer and our community and having substitute teachers that's coming in. These professional union workers have been in place for a long time, and the National Grid is not, you know, work to try to come up with the contracts. So this is a great motion. I would support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Councilor Milonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a very good motion. I want to thank the makers of the motion for bringing it forward. I actually have a family member who's been locked out as a result of this action taken by National Grid, and it just, it's incredible to me, not only have they been locked out, but now they've had their health insurance taken away from them. So I think this is a very good motion. From a procedural standpoint, we actually have a public hearing this evening on a gas request over in Nesbit Street. So again, I don't know if we have to procedurally open it and then just close it in order for...
It's withdrawn.
Oh, it's withdrawn? Okay, thank you. Thank you. But again, I'm going to support the motion because, again, we need to support the workers who have been locked out, and as Council Noon just mentioned, they're bringing, in my opinion, inexperienced workers in to replace them while this ongoing lockout continues. So it's a good motion.
Councilor Sorrell, then Councilor Kennedy?
Yes, I would like to just amend the motion to make it a little bit more streamlined and have it issued for gas pipeline work, underground distribution, and underground It's all encompassed in gas work, and I just wanted to make it very, very clear.
Also, makers of the motion?
No objection.
Okay. Want to repeat that, please?
Gas pipeline work in the city, underground distribution, and underground transmission. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy? Then Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to support the motion, and the motion as amended, I think that the comments of Council Mercer are right on, that this does present a safety situation for the citizens in Lowell. But, you know, beyond that, too, this is a company that has reported, what, a 22%, 23% increase in profits over last year. I would imagine that if they gave the union everything they wanted in the contract, that their profits would still be probably 20% over what it was last year. So it's hard to, for anybody, I think, to have any empathy for National Grid on this. So I'm happy to support the motion.
Any further discussion? I'm sorry, Council Conway, then city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say that I think it's extremely important that Councilor Elliott and Councilor Mercer brought this motion forward. We talked about this before, a few weeks ago, and my, my number-one concern was, well, obviously, the workers in getting a fair contract, but also when you're dealing with gas, you're dealing with something that is extremely dangerous, and the last thing you want to do is you, you don't want the, should we say, the B-team coming in and not having the A-team, and I think that's exactly what we have right now. So I think there's too much at stake all the way around, and hopefully, this will, this will send a message that perhaps they'll go back to the table and get the job done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was Roll. I'm sorry, city manager.
Thank you. Just quickly through you to the council, and certainly, you know, the intent of the motion to make sure that the workers are treated fairly is well-positioned, as well as we have no control over how long this will go on. I just want to call to the council's attention that we do have projects, including the gas heaters to be installed over at the high school that are being delivered, and we expect the work to, we wanted the work to happen this summer before students were back in school. Depending on the wish of the council, we can bring these matters to your attention on a case-by-case basis because the, without, there is no heat in the high school. They took down the old heaters, and the new ones are in the process of being delivered, and there was some preliminary work that would be done, and that's just one project that I'm aware of. We did just check. No permits have been pulled yet, but it would be expected that they probably would need to pull permits. So I just, I just put it out there, and perhaps we can, we can let the council know as we go.
Councilor Elliott?
Just a question. So who, who would be pulling the permits? Who's installing the gas heaters? Contractors for the city?
It would be, it would be a contractor.
For the city?
That's, that's, well, Eric Slagel is here. He could perhaps address it. Yes, we have a contractor. Boston, I believe Boston Mechanical is going to be installing, but they would likely need permits to be pulled through National Grid, but I just throw that out there. Eric, if you can address that.
Through National Grid?
Sure, through you to the council. Typically, for large-scale gas projects like that, National Grid has to authorize the shutting off of the gas to the system, and then they're out there to ensure when the gas gets turned back on. I do not know how that impacts the strike. I don't know if the people who do that are the people who, are the same people who are on strike, but National Grid typically for those large-scale installations is...
We can get a report and get it back to the council. As I said, the intent was to try and get all the work accomplished this summer, but we'll get further detail as to where we are. I did get a report the other day that the heaters are being delivered, that the preliminary sheet metal work was going to be done, and that then there would be installation. We did check to see if any permits have been pulled. None have so far, so we can keep you posted. But I just wanted to alert you to that, so there wasn't any impediment to getting that work done. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Councilor Mercer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I said before I spoke that there's a person, Jim Mariolis, and he'd like to respond to that, if he could speak to the microphone.
The wish of the council, yes.
Jim Mariolis, I live at 4 Beatrice Road, Westford. On that particular work, we do shut things off and turn things on after, but again, mostly to safety and the pipelines and the infrastructure improvements that the company's planning on doing while locking us out and posing a risk is really the main concern. So if it's the will to, I'm hoping that this isn't going to be lengthy, but it could be. We're meeting again with the company this Thursday. It's been very slow. They haven't been moving on their position. And again, I, so far, what I've been, I'm very happy that you're also thinking of the workers because there's just absolutely no need for us. We've offered to keep extending the contract and working through this, and it's, the response we're getting is basically take it or leave it. This is the third contract we've had with them that's been very, very contentious, but they've planned this lockout, and it is, the other gentleman said, strike. It is a strike on the workers from the company, if you look at it that way, but to that, to that work, that needs to be done for the project, for the school. I'm sure if that's, that's coming up down the road, if that's the will of the body to, you know, to do that. But the pipeline, the underground, the potential for dangerous situations, contractors trying to do work inside for heating, we would understand.
Thank you for that information. Council Conway, then Council Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, I just want to, I just want to point a clarification. At Lowell High School, the unit that they have to put in for the heating, is this, is this going to be done by a contractor?
Yes.
A separate contractor?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any, the installation, is it underground at all with, with any gas pipes?
Well, there's gas piping because there are four units that are being delivered, and there is gas piping. As far as the underground, I think as Mr. Mariolis just mentioned, there is shut-off and National Grid was there when we had to shut the system down, and when, and so they've been involved in the project, but they won't be doing the installation in there. So as far as what's underground, there may be, you know, in connection with the shut-off, some underground gas piping. There may be new piping being put in, I expect, by our contractor, Boston Mechanical, but, but National Grid would be involved.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, when it comes to emergencies like right now, if there's a gas leak or anything like that, and I know there's been a lot of problems with the high school for heating and air conditioning and stuff, we understand that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, the high school's important, too, but I think that, you know, everybody's, we're pretty clear on what the council thinks about this, and I think that Council Mercer has asked for a roll call vote, which I would expect to be unanimous. However, regarding the high school, I think everybody on the city council would be comfortable with you just using your best judgment and going forward with that. That's important as well. And certainly, everybody recalls that back in the spring, we were experiencing, experiencing a lot of trouble with the, with the whole HVAC system, and so that's got to be straightened out for September, and that's important, so.
Thank you. Roll call. Councilor Milonazo?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Sorrell?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Councilor Mercer?
Yes.
Nyhan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor?
I would like to request 5.1...
We're going to go to the hearings now. We have to, it's after 7 o'clock. We have to go to the hearings.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. First, I want to have the, except for the minutes, 2.1 minutes of rules, subcommittee, July 10th. City council meeting, July 10th. Educational partnership, a subcommittee, July 19th. Need a motion to accept and place on file?
So moved.
By Council Mercer, second by Council Conway. Thank you. We're now open up to the general public hearings. The first one under 3.1, ordinance amend Chapter 272 by establishing new Article 10 entitled Stormwater Management. I need, I'm going to open up the hearing. I need to hear those who are in favor. Anyone speaking in favor?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. Mark Young, Executive Director for the Lowell Auto and Oil Utility. This is needed, this ordinance is needed for us to comply with the EPA MS4 stormwater permit that requires communities to have a stormwater ordinance in place that will guide how stormwater is dealt with on development projects throughout the city. So this is a ordinance that is needed for us to comply with that permit, and the timeline is to have it done before the end of the summer.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else speaking in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? In opposition? Opposition? That's, that part of the hearing is closed. I need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Mercer, second by... Second. Council Noon. Any further discussion? Yes, council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to maybe Mr. Young. What's the status of the separation of the, of the stormwater system? I know it's been going on for quite some time.
You're talking about the CSOs?
Correct, yes.
We will be seeking some additional funding to continue with programs, not necessarily all source separation, because there are some more cost-effective methods like treatment and storage that we'll be pursuing.
Okay.
It's ongoing.
It's ongoing, on schedule, ongoing. It's ongoing, on schedule, ongoing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Kennedy?
What percentage, where are we on that? How far along are we in terms of percentage of...
We're still around 65% combined, but the goal is not to have a certain percentage of combined or separated sewer. It's to spend the money to do separation where it's appropriate. If it's cheaper to do storage or treatment, or satellite treatment, that's what we're looking at doing. The, right now, the only area of the city where it would be prudent for us to do sewer separation would be the CSO, where the CSO discharge is at Tilden Street, so the upper section of the acre towards School Street, that would be the appropriate section that we would be looking for in the future to do some sewer separation and stormwater projects.
Yes, Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the, to Mark. I thought they were like, many years ago, we heard there were nine areas, nine culverts in the city.
Nine CSO discharges.
Right, so where are we, how many did we do? How many are left?
Well, we did a lot of projects on enhancing the ability of the treatment plant to maximize flow during wet weather, so that helps us eliminate some of the CSO discharge. Then we did a lot of projects with storage of the interceptors. As a matter of fact, we completed the last project, the storage, about three months ago. So, that project alone allows us to store a million gallons in the larger interceptor store lines. So, we've been doing those projects. We did sewer separation where it was appropriate. If you remember, Counsel, we did sewer separation where we had a lot of backups in people's homes and people's streets, but sewer separation is very expensive, and it's not the answer throughout the city. There's less expensive methods that we could use to mitigate CSOs and then continue on with the program so that we can lessen the amount of CSOs that we discharged to the river.
So, lately, we haven't been getting any audits from the federal government demanding that we do certain things, or have we?
Well, we still have, we still have the consent decree in place from 1989. That's still their hammer, so to speak, that they have. So, we still have to comply with CSOs, but we've been spending money. We've been doing a lot of work. They're happy about that, and we will be sitting down with them to discuss the long-term control plan, which we're hoping to integrate water and wastewater projects, so that we're not just spending money on CSOs. We're also addressing the other infrastructure issues in the city.
Okay, good. We're compliance. We're in compliance. Thank you.
Counsel Elliott?
Thank you. Section 272-115 gives the authority to you, Mr. Young, to promulgate regulations relative to stormwater management. Does that include private, private property, private developments?
Yes.
So, when, when do you anticipate that you'd be doing those regulations?
Well, we have some in place.
You do?
We do. We have some preliminary ones in place, and obvious not to be onerous, but it's, we want to protect the environment. We want to protect the city.
Agreed.
And we want to be cognizant of development. Obviously, we want to have development.
Right.
But we want to have it done in a manner that's not going to affect the city in a negative way, environmental-wise.
Okay, and that's my concern when it comes to development. I understand stormwater systems and collection, collection systems.
Yes.
But they can be very expensive, and is that, are those requirements promulgated by the federal government through CMR?
Yes.
There, so, that, those ratios that...
But, but communities have the flexibility to also dictate how we want development to deal with some of these stormwater issues, and I think that's important for the city of Lowell, that, we're an urban area.
Right.
We don't have a lot of options. We don't have a lot of open space for stormwater, so whether it be infiltration, the holding back and then pumping back into a sewer system or to a waterway, we want to have as many options as possible.
No, and I think that's an important point, because some, you know, some towns, when they're doing new development projects, whether it's housing or others, they have space to implement natural, natural devices, if we will, through filtration and runoff and things of that nature, so. But, we will be managing those regulations here.
Yes.
Great, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call. Counselor Milonazo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
Nine years. All right. Next, we have 3.2, ordinance amend Chapter 272, ordinance 272-73, compliance with pretreatment standards. Open the hearing for those in favor. Anyone speaking in favor? Mr. Young?
Yes, Mark Young, again, Director for the Lowell Regional Wastewater and Water Utilities. Again, this is another EPA requirement, that cities and treatment plants are required to have a pretreatment ordinance, and the ordinance dictates and allows us to enforce and inspect industries for what they discharge into the sewer. This is to protect the sewer system, to protect the treatment plant, and to assure that the final bio-soluble sludge from the treatment plant can be disposed of in a safe and environmentally sound way. So, the ordinances that we have in place need to be updated every certain number of years. We've reviewed them, and we've updated them, and it's not, we're not trying to be onerous on businesses. Actually, and sometimes you can relax some of the restrictions, but we want to put, make sure that we have what we need in place to protect the treatment plant, protect the sewer system, and protect the river.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Those speaking in opposition? Opposition? That portion of the hearing is closed. Any discussion from the floor? Move to approve. My motion to adopt?
Second.
By Counsel Mercy, second by Counsel Elliott. Roll call. Counsel Milonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Nine years. All right. Next, we have 3.3, vote to accept master general law, Chapter 59 S5N, a program for a reduced property tax for veterans or spouses in exchange for volunteer service. Open the hearing for those speaking in favor. Anyone speaking in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councillors. My name is James Gaffney. I'm a member of the City Veterans Commission, although I'm speaking tonight as an individual, not as directed by the commission. This ordinance, if adopted, would provide on a voluntary basis the opportunities for disabled veterans or the spouses of deceased veterans to do work as directed by the city, to apply to their, to apply to their tax bills. As a commission, we have a number of mandates. One of them is to look out for the well-being of veterans and their families. Another is to address the issue of veterans homelessness. This ordinance, which would allow a veteran to ease his, to mitigate his or her tax bill or their spouse to mitigate their tax bill, would, I think, would beat the objectives of looking out for their welfare, and perhaps, and perhaps by putting, perhaps by preventing a foreclosure, addressing issues of veterans homelessness. So, for all these reasons, I would support the ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking in favor? That portion is closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the hearing is closed. Any discussion? Counsel Elliott? Counsel Leahy?
Excuse me. Well, I think Mr. Gaffney said it best. That was the reason why I filed the motion a number of weeks back, or maybe it was several weeks back now, essentially for that, for that purpose. To me, this is a no-brainer. This is something that we haven't adopted. It's a master general law that allows communities to implement a program to allow veterans and/or their spouses to, if they would like to volunteer, to get some credit for it, to get some financial support for it. I know that we have, we have a program for our seniors of similar nature, so I thought anything that we can do to bring forward to help our veterans and/or their surviving spouses is something that we should look into, and I hope, I hope many veterans and/or their families take advantage of this in the city, and we'll do what we can to let them know that it is available. So, I think it's, I think it's a win-win, and I appreciate you bringing it forward, and it's, I think it's a good motion. It's a good thing to help our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Leahy, then Counsel Mercy.
Thank you. So, I just had a couple of questions. So, if you had two veterans per household, does it apply one person per household, or is it for both people in a household?
Excuse me. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council, I believe if they were both property owners and were both entitled, then they would both qualify. Is that correct? I see the assessor nodding that that's, that's correct.
That is correct.
Okay. My other question was, so I think it does say, but if you have a percent of, if you're already getting a tax break, this adds on to it, so it...
Correct. It doesn't replace it, but it is in addition to any other eligibility that the property owner would have. Is that correct?
Up to $1,000 on your taxes.
Yep.
Okay. And then my third question was just, how does it get broken down if, say, you only work half the hours that you're eligible for?
Well, right now, it would be $7.50 an hour, so it depends on how many hours you're going to work. And if you're already...
Is that minimum wage then?
If you're a 10% veteran, if you're 10% disabled, you would apply for the $400 automatically. It would be on top of that, up to the, up to the $1,000.
Okay, because my only question was, and I guess it's, when I spoke to the manager, it's under Commonwealth law. It just doesn't seem like enough, so I was disappointed that, you know, maybe this is something we take up with the state, but it just seems, it only goes up to minimum wage, right?
Correct. That's correct.
Madam Manager?
All right.
Yeah, under the statute, it's up to minimum wage, not more than minimum wage.
Right.
As far as the hourly credit.
To me, that just doesn't seem right. It should be a little higher than that on, and maybe the town or city should be able to come up with an agreed rate, but for now, it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Susan. I know when you're a senior and you're qualifying to do the volunteer work to get it off your taxes, and it isn't all off of all your taxes at once, it's like quarterly, is it not?
Yes, if you work prior to, or if you finish your hours prior to December, we can get it on the last two tax bills.
Right, and there's like an age restriction or requirement. Is there for the veterans?
No.
There is not?
No.
So, if I have a veteran that's 40 years old, let's say, and he may apply if he's qualified, right?
That's correct.
Or she, so that's good. I'm very happy to hear that. But for the seniors, there's an age requirement, but not for the veterans?
That's correct. 65 for the seniors.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Counsel Milonazo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very good ordinance and one which I plan to support. My question has to do with, on page three of three, it talks about allowing an approved representative for persons physically unable to provide such service. Who actually approves the representative? What's the process to get someone approved as a veteran or a spouse to be their representative? How does that process work?
It would be whoever the veteran would choose.
Would choose?
Yes.
Okay, and then that person gets approved by the City Assessor's Office or the Veterans Council, or?
Well, that hasn't been decided yet, but the exemptions are approved by my office.
Okay. Well, again, I think it's very good that the language is in here that a representative can actually do the volunteer work or the volunteer hours in order to get this exemption, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? I need a motion to adopt. Counsel Milonazo, second by Counsel Mercy. Roll call. Counsel Milonazo?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Nine years. Thank you. All right. 4.1, National Grid requires permission to install sole-owned poles on Ellsworth Street for new feeder extensions for Markley Data Center. I need to open the hearing for those speaking in favor. Hearing, anyone speaking in favor?
Good evening. National Grid is asking permission to install poles on Ellsworth Street, and that's going to be for feeder heightening for the Markley Data Center.
All right, thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Come back.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm Sean Wong. I'm from Leidos. I'm a National Grid contractor, and yes, the project is to get a new service to the data, Markley data, the data center, and the pole installation on Ellsworth Street is, that's construction that was determined to support that service going to the data center.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, that portion is closed. Anyone in opposition? In opposition? Forward, please.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everybody. Steve Malagodi, 200 Market Street, and when I was on the way in here today, the gentleman from the union said, "You're the guy from that environmental organization, aren't you?" And I said, "Yeah, I'm the guy." 350 Mass Lowell Node. Over on the Concord Greenway, there's one of those informational displays, and on that display, there's a reproduction of an editorial cartoon that expresses the sentiments of the community at the time, and the caption of that editorial cartoon is, "The financial and private interests of a corporation should not be considered when weighed against the health, comfort, and lives of the community." That was the Lowell Sun in 1909. It's on display over at the Concord Greenway. "National Grid has certainly weighed in against the health, comfort, and lives of 1,200 gas workers when it locked their union out rather than negotiate a new contract in good faith. Not only has National Grid shown callous disregard for its workers, who through no fault of their own are now suffering loss of wages and health insurance, but has shown callous disregard for the health and safety of all the residents and businesses of Lowell. Outsourcing maintenance of dangerous gas lines to scab contractors puts the lives of Lowell citizens at risk." "National Grid has made the deliberate and willful decision that its profits are more important than the well-being of this community. Therefore, as the Lowell Sun said back in 1909, 'Their business before you today should get no consideration.' As long as National Grid continues to lock out its workers, any business, any business that National Grid has before this council should be tabled until such time as the lockout is over. While the workers are locked out of National Grid, then National Grid should be locked out of this council." Now, you passed a motion earlier concerning permits, apparently permits for gas lines and others, infrastructure like that. Maybe National Grid doesn't care. Maybe they think that they can wait this out because their gas lines, and they can wait the workers out on this one. None of the items before you today are an emergency, but repairing the gas leaks, making sure the health and safety of the citizens of Lowell is secure is an emergency. If you want to send a message to National Grid, if you want to do something that actually moves to end this lockout, then make a motion, to put a motion, adopt a motion that says, "While the workers are locked out, there will be, all permits for everything will be tabled until there's a resolution." That will make a difference. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Any discussion? Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. So, thank you to the speaker, because that's what Counsel Elliott and I said last week, so I'm not voting for anything National Grid, and I don't know if we want to make that motion, but I'll make that motion tonight to table everything from National Grid until they decide to come up with a decent contract.
We have a second?
To make that motion.
Motion by Counsel Leahy, second by Counsel Elliott. Okay. Any further discussion? Counsel Milonazo?
Thank you. Again, I know what the intent of the motion is, and I will support the motion, but a question to the City Manager. The Markley Data Center has a $200 million investment going on over there. going on over there. Again, I don't know what a sole-owned pole would do to that investment, but at the end of the day, I just want to hear from the administration as to what impact this vote would have.
Thank you. It's our understanding, this is electrical service to support the data center. Markley, as you point out, has a very large center that they've established in Lowell and are needing this to continue the support of their business, but that's about as far as we know at this point.
Counsel Leahy?
So I would say to that, that they're a big company, they might have a lot of pull. They can make some calls to National Grid, so, thank you.
All right. We have a roll call and a motion. Please read the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Counsel Kennedy? I just would like to offer in substitution a motion that we delay action on this until the next meeting, so that we can find, so the city management will have an opportunity to find out from the Markley Data Center just how important this is. It just seems like that might be the more prudent approach rather than to moving ahead. So I would offer that as a substitute.
We have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Counsel Mercy. Right. Further discussion? Okay. We'll have a roll call and substitute motion.
So do we have to vote on the substitute?
Yes.
On the, Counsel Kennedy, on the delay for a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Malazza?
Yes.
Counsel New?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Counsel Cirilla?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
No.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Eight yeas. Okay. So we have a delay on the vote now. When you go to the next, four point two has been withdrawn. We're now at four point three. National Grid slash Verizon Northeast Region requires permission to relocate pole number two on Maple Street towards Gorham Street. Open hearing for those in favor. Those who want to speak in favor?
This is the end for the Markley Data Center support. The pole just needs to be relocated in order to get that, to get the service over to the data center.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? That portion is closed. Those speaking in opposition? All these items should be tabled. Thank you. Thank you. All right. That portion is closed. Discussion, any discussion on this motion?
I'd like to say motion, delay action until the next time.
Second, Ed.
Second by, well, actually, the motion is just to refer to the wire inspector for report and recommendation. That's all we need. Our motion to delay is also the same. Roll call. Roll call. Counsel Malazza?
Yes.
Counsel New?
Yes.
Ms. Maris?
Yes.
Counsel Cirilla?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
No.
Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
No.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Seven yeas. Okay. Next, four point four. TC Systems Incorporated require permission to install underground cable conduit on Aiken Street at the intersection of Father Morissette Boulevard. Open the hearing for those in favor. Yes?
Hi, Chris Murray with TC Systems. We're looking to install new conduits at the intersection of Aiken Street and Father Morissette Boulevard to increase our capacity of fiber optic presence in the city of Lowell.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? That portion is closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. Any discussion on this matter?
Move of approval.
Move of approval? Motion to refer to the wire inspector for report and recommendation.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
Counsel Mercy, seconded by Counsel Conway. Next, TC Systems Incorporated require permission to install underground cable conduit on University Ave between Riverside Street and Veterans and Foreign War Highway. Open the meetings. Anyone speaking in favor?
Yes, Chris Murray again with TC Systems. Again, same as the last one, we're looking to increase our fiber optic presence within the community, and this will help us do so.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Counsel Elliott, one. You have a second?
I just had a question. This is, this is a busy thoroughfare, so does this mean that you're going to be opening up University Ave between Riverside and the VFW?
Do we have a comment?
It's conduit, so.
Yes. Yes, we'll be installing four-inch conduit. Width of the trench is generally about twelve inches.
Has that recently been paved, Madam Mayor? When's the last time it was? Just seems like each time that we go through paving, then we're ripping it up later, and it's never put back in the same condition that it was before that.
Yeah, I don't have the specific date for that, that street, but we can get that for you if you want to delay action.
I know a fair amount of work has been done on that street for quite some time, and if it has been paved, paved beforehand, then I would be very hard-pressed to open that up again.
Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have we, have we requested a list from the utility companies as to, for anybody that would want to open up the streets as to what their, what their plans are going forward in the next five years? Do you recall, maybe a couple of months ago, we had that on the agenda or something?
Yeah, we have made the request. We don't have a report back, but we were requesting of each one. We also were requesting the, the age, in other words, when the paving had been done from the list, so that we could compare in terms of what projects they had. Typically, there is the five-year window that, that they are not to dig up or open a street if it's been paved within the previous five years.
Right. But I guess the intent of the motion at that time was that they probably know what streets they're going to need to open up over the next five years. I would imagine that it would be like that for them, so that they have scheduled out over several years what their plan is going to be. And that's the plan that would tell us whether or not it would be, it would make sense to pave the street or not.
Right, right. We'll follow up on that.
Thanks.
All right. Anyone, that portion's closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? In opposition? Opposition? That portion is closed. Any further discussion on that matter? All right. Need a motion to refer to the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Counsel Malazza, seconded by Counsel Leahy. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As part of the recommendation when it comes back, could we, could we find out, because that comes back to the council, right? It doesn't, it just sits there for a week?
It doesn't come back to the council.
All right. I just, I thought it came back, but...
Excuse me, Counsel, it doesn't.
Okay. It's come back. I just want to make sure if we can get that update, whether, you know, the status of that road, because I do think it's important, knowing that it's a busy intersection and, you know, it's, it'll be good to add that information. Thank you.
So you're looking for the road, and you're also looking for traffic information, too?
I'm just looking on the status, not, no, not paving, not travel, just when the last time that road was paved, because it was a significant amount of infrastructure work just done recently.
You're correct. I just, if you want to move on. Thank you. Yes, you want to come?
When we went through the, when we went through the application process, we met with the, the city engineer, and he reviewed that, and I believe he took that into account, the five-year rule. So I believe that that has not been paved within the last five years, but I'll defer to whatever is decided.
The report.
Okay. That satisfactory? Thank you. All right. This portion is now closed. Before we go to communication with the city manager, Counsel Cirilla, you were asked to take something out of order?
Yes, I was requesting to take five point two out of order.
Five point two?
Yes, please.
A second to that?
Yeah.
Counsel Kennedy? This is the information portion, Collins Center study?
Yes.
Organization, organization study on facilities management. Counsel, Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. There is a report that the council was provided in their packet regarding the study that the Collins Center had done. Representative from the Collins Center is here tonight to make a presentation on that and to answer any questions that the council may have.
Proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Monica Lamboy. I'm a senior associate at the Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. Our group was created by the state legislature about nine years ago in recognition of how hard our cities and towns are working just to keep the daily operations going. What we do is offer services to analyze departments, provide assistance with job training, with job announcements, a whole slew of different things. We did happen to do a project for the city of Lowell in 2012, looking at the DPW in general. We were asked to come back and take a deeper dive into facilities management, both on the city and the school side. So I have some slides here. The process that we followed, we gathered a lot of data, including interviews with staff, budgets, job descriptions. We went through some site visits and walkthroughs on a number of different buildings, and wanted to offer you our findings and recommendations this evening, as well as some background. What we found is strengths in the organization is a really solid institutional knowledge. They know the buildings very closely. There's a good working relationship between the city side and the school side. We found the staff to be really resilient and flexible and creative in trying to accomplish the work that's before them. And I really want to compliment the staff that are working in a difficult situation, and nothing that we are saying in this report is to criticize them as individuals, because we do feel they are working hard. There are some electronic systems, including the remote monitoring that you have of your heating and cooling systems, which really is state-of-the-art and is to be complimented. And for our school buildings, there is a work order system that allows personnel at different school sites to submit work orders that can then go electronically to the staff in the facilities management. In terms of challenges, there's a very significant understaffing today based upon the square footage that is to be maintained between the schools and the city buildings. The lack of a work order system for city buildings means we don't have the level of data about the city buildings and facilities requests that we have for the school side. Our, the staff, perhaps no surprise, are operating pretty much exclusively in a response mode, as opposed to preventative maintenance, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. The, on the horizon, are several hundred million dollars of capital investment in school buildings. We have some figures. You can anticipate a substantial investment in, in city buildings, and whether the organizational structure and the management team is in place, I think, is a very open question. And pursuing outside funding, the Massachusetts School Building Authority offers significant funding. If you are not organized and equipped to tap into that funding, we're talking about many millions of dollars that are, that are not available to offset some of the costs that are coming up. By the numbers, municipal buildings, you have, our study excluded any of the water facilities, and we also excluded the parking structures, but other than that, there are three hundred and twelve thousand square feet of city building, ranging in size from two thousand three hundred square feet, the fire training station, to the JFK Civic Center, which is the largest city building at seventy-six thousand four hundred. There are two publicly-owned buildings that are operated on a daily basis by others. This includes the, the baseball stadium and the memorial auditorium, where although they are maintained and operated daily, there are substantial facilities maintenance responsibilities retained by the city. The average age of the building inventory is eighty-five years, if you can consider that. You also lease two facilities, the Career Center and the Senior Center. Looking at the school facilities, there are thirty-one different buildings across twenty-eight sites. There you can see the elementary schools, fifteen elementary, one high school, Career Academy, et cetera. Two point four, four million square feet of school building across the city of Lowell, a substantial inventory of school buildings. Here we find the average age of school buildings is fifty-nine years, or younger. You had quite a number of buildings that were built in the nineties, and one more recently. Nevertheless, some of the schools are well over a hundred years old, one hundred and thirty-eight in terms of occupied buildings, but the heat plant at the high school is a hundred and sixty-six years old, the structure there. There's also one leased facility, which is the school administration. Your Land and Buildings Division, which is inside of your DPW, is responsible for facilities management overall. As facilities management goes, it includes capital planning and implementation, the type of work to maintain the buildings, preventative maintenance is to go in early and to change filters and et cetera, responding to work orders and responding to emergencies, grounds maintenance right around the buildings, custodial services in the city buildings. There's also the Electrical Division within the DPW, that part of its work is for facilities, but they're also responsible for traffic signals, streetlights, et cetera, and those two groups work collaboratively together. Here's an org chart, it's a little hard to see, of the staff. One of the findings in the report is that in the last ten years, there's been eleven staff position reduction in the Land and Buildings Division, so you had considerably more staff approximately ten years ago. And the report details which positions. On the school side, they are predominantly responsible for custodial services, but they are the first eyes on the building, so they typically submit work orders for school buildings. Could be the heating is too hot or too cold, or the air conditioning's not working, the cleanliness, obviously, the grounds maintenance. And the facilities manager in the schools manages the remote heating and cooling systems for the school buildings. He told me he gets about seventy emails a day from the electronic system of different sorts of indicators that are going off in their heating and cooling. There you can see the director, one clerk, and ninety-three school custodians that he is responsible for supervising. In the fiscal year that just passed, 2018, the school district deleted three technical positions from their budget, included an HVAC technician, and the monitor of the remote monitoring system position was vacated, and a plumber position. At some point in the past, they actually had two plumbers. So in addition to the eleven FTE that were cut within the DPW, we also had another three for a total of about fourteen positions over the past ten years. This is a graphic looking at the budget, a lot of detail here. What's of note is that the operating budget, these are dollars for contractors, dollars for supplies, have been substantially cut in the past two years. There's about a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar reduction between 2016 and 2018, is about thirty percent of the 2016 budget. Now, this graphic is combined, school and city, and it was a bit of a challenge to try to get those numbers together. So one of the challenges in the system with this bifurcated is to be able to track all of the spending. All in all, it translates to about twenty-four cents per square foot, excluding labor, the in-house labor. We did a look at the contractual services. Here we're seeing a really steep reduction in contractual services, but in some of them that you would expect to see routinely, pest management has been reduced, fire, security, those sorts of expenditures that there is not the in-house expertise or the in-house licensing to do, and yet we're seeing a reduction. That kind of calls to the question, you know, why is that happening? Are they not, just not able to get those scopes of work done and get the, get the work out there? Or are they just being very frugal? And I know there is an attentiveness to the budget on behalf of the staff, but, but this is an issue of concern here. Preventative maintenance, what does it mean? Why would you do it? Studies have shown that preventative maintenance results in two dollars in savings for every one dollar that's invested. If you imagine, you can go and patch the roof before you actually have a leak, that has a savings. If you're changing the filters on your heating and cooling systems, they run more effectively, so your utility costs are down. You're less likely to have damage from that. Your assets will last longer, they'll be in better condition. Everybody knows when there's an emergency that to call out the technicians is much more Everybody knows when there's an emergency that to call out the technicians is much more expensive than if you were able to do the work ahead of time. And then, interestingly, when one piece of equipment fails, typically there's another piece of equipment attached to it that has some sort of damage. That's a secondary failure that's also costly, reduced overtime, and the ability to buy equipment when you have time to go for the, for bids to get the best price and improve safety and comfort. This is a graphic that just shows basically, as a facility ages, if you're not maintaining it, the cost to rehabilitate it is actually an exponential curve. It's not a linear curve. So the longer you wait, it's exponentially more costly to, to resolve the issue, depending on how long you've waited to do it. We looked at your capital budget, and there is a robust capital budget that the city has been putting together. However, the caveat is that compared to the 2014 comprehensive study of the schools, there is a bit of a mismatch going on. What we can see from your next five years, well, 18 to 22, you have projected 6.2 million dollars of work at school buildings, which isn't a significant number. However, the 2014 study suggests that there's over $143 million of work at the schools, excluding the high school project that is needed, or an average of 14.3 million per year for schools. We're investing 6.2 over five years. So this is where I'm starting to talk about the hundreds of millions. And, and these numbers are not today's numbers, these are numbers that are now four years older. Construction costs, you know, lots of costs have gone up since then. Moving on to findings. Our first finding, which I alluded to earlier, is that the Land and Buildings Division is seriously understaffed. Based on the inventory of buildings to maintain, it suggests 37.7 FTE. This industry standard was created by a survey of property maintenance, companies, maintenance organizations nationwide, and they have come up with a ratio, which is what we use in the report. So that's where it came from. Now, a lot of that's private sector, our public sectors are not exactly on the same standard, but it is a good benchmark to use. Currently you have 25 FTE, including the electrical. That suggests a 13.7 person shortfall, which sort of interestingly lines up with the 11 plus the three cuts over the last 10 years. What we're recommending specifically is to add three to four positions between the current fiscal year and 2021. When, when possible, discontinue the in-house painting. You currently have one painter who cannot possibly keep up with the demand. And basically, people are not submitting work orders for painting because they know they're not going to be addressed. We make a recommendation to divide the staff into two geographical teams to reduce travel time between buildings, but also to develop a sense of perhaps competitiveness within the group, but to get the knowledge of the individual buildings. There's a lot of buildings in a lot of different places with different types of equipment. So if you can build a group that have a lot of expertise, that will help having to kind of re-remember every time you go into the building what there is. And also to perform a salary survey to make sure that your salaries are competitive. Because in an organization that has a very lean staff, a vacancy is very impactful. So you want to make sure you can get good folks in and quickly. Number two, the department operates largely in a response mode. It's not surprising that they can't get ahead on the preventative maintenance. The problem is, when you are dealing with a situation where you're predominantly responding to emergencies, things that are further down the queue that can't get addressed until they too become an emergency. So you're always responding to the next emergency and you're not getting ahead of it. We recommend that you hire a consultant, and you actually have done this, to develop a preventative maintenance schedule for each building. So they will tell you what systems need to be done and when, and input it into the work order system. We recommend this summer to do an assessment of school doors and locking mechanisms. There were a large number of work orders having to do with doors that are not functioning. And in the national environment around our school safety, it's really imperative to have this work done this summer. And further protect the operating budget from further cuts. Number three, if the staff is operating in a largely emergency mode, they're not equipped to manage the really significant capital projects that are coming forward in the next five to 10 years. You've got buildings that are, were new in 89 to 94 that are now getting to the point where their major systems, boilers, roofs, et cetera, are going to need to be replaced at the tune of hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. You still have six schools that are over 100 years of age that do need to be looked at. And as I said, we don't know the city building needs. This is a dramatic recommendation, but we are recommending that facilities management become its own department, reporting directly to the city manager's office. There's a number of reasons for that. One, your DPW has a really broad mission, and the amount of work that has to be done with facilities management to deal with capital and to change the operational structure, the strategic thinking that needs to be done to change how business is done, is going to require a lot of attention. We're recommending a new director position to be able to oversee those two things, the capital and the change in the mission and the strategic operation. And then to do further study on your buildings to make sure you have the up-to-date needs. Finding four, other than the high school project, evidence suggests that the schools have not pursued outside funding since 2011. So that means any kind of work, boilers, roofs, windows, that could have been eligible for up to 80% reimbursement because of your economics here, were not pursued. There's still time available, there's still a list of projects that are out there. But to be able to get through the MSBA process requires people to manage that process and to do that. On the other hand, if a single roof project got an MSBA reimbursement of $800,000, that alone covers this personnel for multiple years. So if you think about the investment in the personnel, it will show significant returns in terms of grant money for those buildings. We recommend meeting with the MSBA, they're really customer-friendly. If you can talk about your inventory, they can talk about how to organize that to be able to tap in best to the programs that they have. We're recommending that the assistant superintendent for finance over at the school side be responsible for the administrative piece in partnership with the new technical person that we're recommending over on the city side. It should be a really strong partnership to do that. And then just develop a schedule of when you're going to submit and for what. Finding five, recent catastrophic billing, building failures have resulted in considerable damage and high costs, including the high school and the, and the library. At present, there are only two staff that know how to manage the remote monitoring system. That's not a, you need more duplication for people that can do that so that they can go on vacation or if they're injured or whatever. And also there are times when buildings should be visually inspected. We cannot rely strictly on these computer systems. But not wanting somebody to go there every weekend, there should be a really strict protocol for which buildings, under which kinds of conditions, should have a visual inspection either late at night or on the weekend. It will be able to save you some money long-term. Finding six and seven is electronic work order system. We also found out that there are limited vehicles that are operational over in Land and Buildings. So what's happening is the staff are doubling up. So a project that would normally only require one tradesperson, two are sent because they're in the same vehicle. Make sure you have a work order system for the city buildings and maintain a fleet that's about 60% of the size of the workforce. A van could be used to transport, particularly if we're talking about the geographic teams. They could be able to go drop people off at multiple sites in the area, go pick them up later. Finding eight, the, currently there's very, very little inventory in the facilities office at the DPW building. And there's a multi-step procurement process. And this we heard from the customers' perspective, what they see is, oh, they came out to respond to my work order, and then they left, and nobody came back. And what they don't know is behind the scenes, is they came to figure out what parts that you need. But now they need to go get quotes for those parts, they need to get it into the requisition system, they need to get the rec approved, the rec needs to go to the vendor, they need to go get the item, and two, three weeks have passed. And the sort of recollection that, oh, I'm supposed to go back to such and such a building to install this part has now sort of passed. So I think two things to look at is, one, what inventory should be maintained in-house so that they can just go get the parts or they can have them in the truck when they go out to the site initially? It shouldn't be huge, but it should be thoughtful, and the staff do know what they need. And then also to look at blanket purchase orders, and also to work with the chief financial officer to look at the procurement process and how it can be expedited, particularly for these very tiny things. If we're getting a $5 off on a part, but four or five people are touching the requisition process for significant amounts of time, we haven't really saved $5, we've actually cost more. Findings nine and 10, the school custodial staffing is somewhat higher than the industry standard for the educational standards. But part of that has to do with just the square footage of the buildings. You can't just, you know, going down to 0.8 or 0.75 doesn't really save you anything. But if custodians can do a little bit more preventative maintenance, a little bit of preventative maintenance across a 93-person workforce does, can accomplish a tremendous amount of work. So we are recommending that next time there's bargaining with the custodians, that there's a, a sense of trying to have them continue to assist more in the preventative maintenance. An example is, right now, they're not allowed to change out the ceiling tiles, just those little ceiling tiles, they're, they're prohibited from doing that. That's not a structural task. We've also found other school systems, custodians are allowed to do minor patching, minor painting. So you don't have to put the work order system, you don't have to have somebody drive across town just to do a little patching. Overall, you know, again, there really is a commitment to the city and the schools that we saw from the staff. They have quite a bit of creativity, trying to be very cost-effective by doing a lot of work in-house. Some of the question is whether it would be more cost-effective, it would be done outside, but they are trying as best as they can within the system that they're working in. The challenge is, is really the significant understaffing, the inability to get to preventative maintenance, the significant capital needs that are, that are over the horizon, very shortly over the horizon. And they need to really bring in as many dollars as you can from outside sources to deal with these capital needs. So, thank you for that.
Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that report, it was very inclusive, and you certainly have a lot of recommendations there. With, with your experience, do you have any kind of an idea or an estimate of how much these recommendations and suggestions would cost?
In the report, there's a table for each of the recommendations that have a cost. We did ballpark them. Some of the work, the, the study of the capital needs and the study of the preventative maintenance, you already have underway. Those are a significant amount, but the personnel costs are there as well.
What's, what's the total on that, total personnel cost?
For the three positions, I think we estimated $2.97 with benefits. Actually, I did that with four positions.
Okay, thank you.
I'll sit, Counselor Kennedy.
Counselor Murcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is a subject that I think people on the, the City Council and probably on the, and on the school committee as well have been talking about for a long time and complaining about for a long time. And so, you know, this report, I, I think is a good thing, even though it, it sounds like we have a long way to go with improvements. And it's, it's not just going to be a long road, but I think it's going to be, in some respects, an expensive road. But, but I think if we're going to get serious about this, and we should, that we have to adopt a lot of these recommendations. And I also think that, you know, looking long-term, the end result, and I think that that's part of what was said in the presentation, that it should result in a savings ultimately. Not now, not in the next two, three, or four years maybe, but ultimately, there should be a savings. You know, one of the things that I wanted to ask is, with, with the schools and all the school buildings that we have, it would make sense to me that we would use one kind of paint in all the schools, and one kind of, the same kind of fixtures in all of the restrooms, and so forth and so on. And so that it would just, it would seem to me that it would be easier, it would allow us to maintain some inventory on hand, and everybody would be familiar about how you go about taking care of those. Is that something that we do now, or is it, do we do that at all, or is that, is that, would that be something that you would recommend would make sense?
I do think efficiencies like that makes sense. With the varying ages of the buildings, that alone is going to be a challenge, but doesn't mean not to pursue it. And certainly with renovations or substantial work being done, to try to set a standard is a very good idea. Right now, it's, I think they literally have to go out to the site to remember what type of faucet or what type of heating coil it is, and then they have to go purchase it individually.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, you know, that's just one more thing that probably would help. But I think that, you know, ultimately, you know, we, this is a report that we should not just put on the shelf. This is something that we should implement. And so I would like to move, and I realize other people probably want to speak on this, but I would like to move that we send this to the, the City Council Subcommittee on Facilities, which I think can meet jointly with the, with the school, there's a school committee, subcommittee that's, that's kind of the same deal. And just go forward and maybe meet at a time that the city manager thought appropriate, and see what we can do about implementing this, and move, push this, these recommendations forward. Because I think in the long run, I, I think they're very important. And I think that people five, 10 years from now will thank us if we do this right now.
I second the motion.
It was seconded by Counselor Millenazzo.
Oh.
Counselor Murcia, Counselor Millen, and Counselor Millenazzo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to this remarkable young lady. Let me just say, you did a thorough representation of this whole report. It was a very, very thorough report, and you said it in such a way that it was frightening to me. It was very frightening to me, and I'm not kidding, because I know that these things have to be done, but it's such mind-boggling that we can't bankrupt the very people that are living in these homes in the city. You know, I know that everything you said is true. It's just that I don't know where we're getting the money to do all these repairs. But understaffed, you said understaffed. People are really working hard here. We think people are just hanging over shovels in the city and just watching the butterflies go by. People are working very hard. We are understaffed in this city because we don't have the money. What's frightening to me, safety in the schools. A simple thing is doors not locking. That's a frightening concept, that anybody can come in. And I don't want to ask you publicly where these schools are, because tonight people will fit, they're watching, they're going to go in there and see what they can take. But I'm telling you, this is a frightening thing. But I just wanted you to know that it's put together very well. I just wish we had the money to do all these repairs. I know it's easy to say, let's keep on top of the schools. Very hard to do that when things are breaking left and right, and we don't have adequate staff. Very difficult to do, we're like juggling all the time. So I think it's true, we should keep this as a form of Bible-type thing so that we can look and see what the most important things are. Not that one is more important than the other, but it's just so thorough, so knowledgeable. And I want to thank you very much because I appreciate all the things that you said. Thank you.
Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report was very comprehensive. Your candidness in the report in terms of recommendation is applauded by all this council. It's not a surprise, because as a city, we, has been to some, to some extent, been, respond to things, it's on respond mode. We are not in preventative mode. Whether you preventative or respond, it's going to be costs associated with it. I think the cost of doing preventative, maybe more now, but it saves lives, but also, also, also save down the road as well. I touch on, you touch on, Counselor, mostly you touch on the door, school. This day and age is, you know, it's, it's crying, I mean, the, the violent in the school. You see it, you hear it. And, and, and yet you raise, you brought those candid, and just frightening to a lot of the parents who's watching or listening. This report is opened our eyes and, and to inspection, and we have to do something about it now. And I like the recommendation of Counselor Kennedy to send it to the facilities subcommittee and to work with the school. Do something about it now, especially starting with the door of the school. Make sure it's worked, make sure it's locked properly. So those are some of the things, yes, it costs, everything costs. Respond to it in the respond mode, it's costs. So do something about it. So thank you for the candid report.
Counselor Millenazzo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a very good report. Thank you for the presentation this evening. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the work of the staff, both on the school side and on the, on the city side, for cooperating with the report. Sometimes when people come in to take a Sometimes when people come in to take a, a look at how an operation works, sometimes people get concerned or nervous, but it looks like the staff on both sides stepped up and really worked in cooperation with the McCormick Graduate School, so thank you for that. My question has to do with, sometimes you look at reports like this, and they talk about preventative maintenance. Other times, you look at a report like this, and they talk about both deferred maintenance and preventative maintenance. So, I'm just wondering if it, when it goes before the facilities subcommittee, if we should talk about doing not only the preventive, but also the deferred maintenance plan, because some of, some of what clearly was highlighted in this report, report, is deferred maintenance, that we either haven't had the money, or we didn't have the staff, or we didn't, or we were putting out fires all across the city and the school side. So, I guess I would just offer that to the facilities subcommittee, to look at a deferred maintenance plan as well as the preventative maintenance plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Councilor Lee?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, it was a great report, very thorough, and again, you know, you can't, if the staff is understaffed, and they just don't have the tools to do the job, you know, that's, that's not their fault, so. But this is something that we've been discussing and kicking down the road for years and years, so it is time that we really put this up and make sure we go through it with a fine-toothed comb. When you did mention about the school doors, you know, that's something that we've, Mr. Conway and myself and Mr. Leary have always been an advocate for, when Mr. Lang was here, we always had the money to do it. Department heads change, and I don't know what happened over the last couple of years, but these doors were neglected, and there is a motion tomorrow night on the school committee meeting, as you know, Mayor, to address this stuff, but these are things we've always tried to keep up with, school safety among these other things, so I look forward to sending this to the subcommittee. Thank you.
You're correct. Thank you. Further discussion? Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one question. Under the MSBA projects in Lowell, the project types, there's a core program, what's green repair? What does that mean?
The green repair has been changed, green meaning environmental, but in the report, we talk about the different programs they have. They have what they call expedited repair now, which is roofs, windows, and boilers, which you can get substantial reimbursement for, and then they have the renovation program. So, the roofs, windows, boilers, you can submit as many applications per year as you would like, okay? You can, and you can receive more than one award in a year. The renovation project, you can only submit one per year, so it's also called roofs, windows, boilers plus, so if you wanted to do a more extensive renovation, you can only do one a year. So that's where we talk about creating a multi-year schedule, so that you know what's going to be submitted what year, so that you can tap into as much as possible.
Thank you. So having said that, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, do we have someone in the city that is aware of MSBA and what is required and what we can go for to get grant money?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, through you to the council. So that's a really important, one of the most important issues that jumped out through the report, because we haven't made an application in several years. And so typically, it originates on the school side, but working in conjunction with the city, we intend to work very closely with the school department to try and capture any opportunity that we can for any of the facilities that are schools, including roofs, doors, windows, and boilers, if it's applicable. So, you know, we do know, obviously, we're part of the core program, we were granted that for the high school back in 2014, but it's been, it's been a while since we've submitted anything. So we need to step up and get more applications into the MSBA, and as the report indicated, work closely with the MSBA in terms of what our needs are and where we should be applying for these.
That's right.
So we do want to work closely with the schools and do that, and I think one of the recommendations is not just having it only on the school side, but having a liaison on the city side for the MSBA application process.
That's important, because if money's out there, we need it.
We want it.
We want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kennedy?
Yeah, I, Mr. Mayor, through you to the, to the city manager, I agree with you totally. When we were at the, the last couple of MSBA meetings, actually, there's a lot of, the agenda had a lot of communities that were taking advantage of that, and I don't recall Lowell doing that for, for many years, so we should get on that, and, and we should be all over that, really, for the next several years.
Absolutely. When we were there, there was one community in particular, I think, got four different awards that day, for, whether it was windows, or roofs, or boilers, but they were taking full advantage of the program, so we need to do the same.
Yes, thank you.
All set? Thank you for the report. Well done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would it, would it make sense, since we have two dozen motion responses, to take items out of order? If I could ask to suspend the rule, because we have some of the appointees or appointments that are here waiting, five point, I guess you could start with five point three through five point eight, because there are appointments and there are people here waiting, so.
We also have petitioners on nine point two. So, should we start with the petitioners, then go to five point three?
Sure.
Okay.
If, if I call it, don't mind.
The committee, okay. On nine point two, it's Phoenix Ave LLC Attorney Jane Bauer, request permission to amend zoning ordinance by extending regional retail zoning district to include fifty-five Phoenix Ave. Currently zoned as light industrial. Yes?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Attorney Jim Bowers. I represent the Phoenix Avenue LLC. They are the owners of a property at fifty-five Phoenix Avenue, which is located off of Rogers Street in Lowell. The petition is to amend the zoning ordinance. Currently, the property located at fifty-five Phoenix Avenue is in a light industrial zone. It is bordered, bordered to the north, into the east, into the west by a resident, a regional retail district, and we are petitioning the council to amend the zoning ordinance to move the, the regional retail line to encompass this property as well. I've attached to the petition a couple of maps of the area, there's a bit of a close-up, one that's a little bit further away, that kind of shows the area that we are speaking of. It's fifty-five Phoenix Ave, again, it's surrounded by the regional retail. I've also enclosed with the packet a photograph of the building. The building has been there for several decades, it's been vacant for most of that period of time. It was subject to a fire in the early part of two thousand, I think around two thousand and three. It has been renovated, it received its first tenant about three years ago to the first floor. My client is looking to lease the second floor space to a, a marijuana dispensary, a retail marijuana dispensary that it has been in discussions with, and the city council has recently enacted its marijuana ordinance that speaks to the locations and where that type of use is permitted, and that type of use is permitted in the regional retail and the office park locations. My client is looking to move the line where it is more or less surrounded by regional retail to encompass its property as well, to allow that use.
Any questions? Anyone else speaking on behalf?
I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor.
All right. The petition is, I'll read it again, Phoenix Ave, request permission to amend zoning ordinance by extending regional retail zoning district to include fifty-five Phoenix Ave, currently zoned light industry. So I need a motion to refer to the law department for a report recommendation.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Mercia, second by Councilor Millenazzo. Thank you.
Just a question, does go to the planning board at this point, or just to the law department?
No, just to the law department, Council, then it comes back down on the form of an ordinance, then to the planning board.
Thank you.
Okay. All set? Attorney, you're all set?
That's it, then. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
All right, we'll go to five point three. Communication to accept the resignation of Salmyra Mitchell, Pauley Memorial Library Board of Trustees, need a motion to accept and place and file. By Councilor Millenazzo, second by Councilor Kennedy. Next, communication, accept the resignation of John McDonald from the Veterans Commission, need a motion to accept and place and file. By Councilor Kennedy, second by Councilor Mercia. Communication to appoint Adam Mitchell to Veterans Commission, motion to accept. Councilor Noon, second by Councilor Elliott. Roll call. Councilor Millenazzo?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Sorrelli?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Nine years. Is Adam Mitchell here? Adam, do you want to come up, say a word? Congratulations, Adam, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Adam. Adam Mitchell, one fourteen, went with Ave. Appreciate the, the opportunity to serve the veterans of Lowell, and, any questions?
Tell us about yourself.
All right, so five years active duty, US Marine, two years Army National Guard, I'm a hundred percent disabled vet, and I attend the Bedford VA quite often, so I understand the, the issues that are facing the veteran community with reintegration, you have jobs, loss of camaraderie, alcohol, drug abuse, things of that nature, so I see that there's lots of work to still be done, and hopefully with help through the VA and the city, we can get it done.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have a communication to appoint Marlene DiMay and Sumatya Achir to Sustainability Council, I need a motion to adopt. So moved by Councilor Kennedy, second by Councilor Elliott. Roll call. Councilor Millenazzo?
Yes.
Councilor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Sorrelli?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercia?
Yes.
Nine years. Are they here?
Yes.
I'd like to come up and say something. Just come up and introduce yourselves, and just give us a little background.
Mayor, city council, thank you very much for this, for this opportunity to serve the city of Lowell. I've been, certainly I've been preparing for, actually, a long part, a long percentage of my life, since reading books on environmentalism when I was ten years old, and when this opportunity showed up, I said, I have to make this chance to make a difference. Thank you all very, very much. Any questions? [applause]
Hello, this is Shometah, downtown resident, and I work for Lowell Telecommunication, and I truly believe where we are right now with our environmental sustainability, we could all work together to reduce our carbon footprint, and I'm really, really honored that, for this opportunity, and I promise to do my best.
To both of you, thank you very much. Next, communication, appoint Timna Nowiki to Lowell Cultural Council, need a motion to accept and place and file. By Councilor Noon, second by Councilor Mercia. Is Timina here?
Yes, she is.
Hi, everybody, my name is Timna, I'm so honored to be part of the Lowell Cultural Council. I've been a resident for twelve years, and I'm really, really happy that I get the opportunity. So thank you.
And a communication, we appoint Maxine Parkus to Lowell Cultural Council, need a motion to accept and place and file. By Councilor Millenazzo, second by Councilor Mercia. Is she here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, madam manager, I want to thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve the city on the Lowell Cultural Council. This is the beginning of my tenth year serving on the council, and I appreciate your support. And if you're going to be at the Folk Festival this weekend, come visit us at destination Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have motion ten point three, we have a speaker. Take that out of order. Councilor Sorrelli, motion is, require environment flood issue, subcommittee can consider the feasibility of prohibiting use and sale of plastic straws in Lowell, provide a report to full city council in timely manner. Second?
Second.
I, Councilor Kennedy, you have the speaker?
Yes, I have a speaker. We'll let the speaker go first.
Speaker, come forward.
Jay Mason.
Jay Mason.
Hi, thank you. I know we have a long agenda, so I'll be very brief. I did want to speak to this motion. I think it's important to support, considering the feasibility of prohibiting the use and sale of plastic straws. By the way, my name is Jay Mason, seventy-seven Tyler Park, to the mayor and council. I did want to mention the Sustainability Council, I'm not here to speak for the council, but I do want to mention that they do have a program in place, they'll be promoting this at our, our table at the Folk Festival, so we'll be able to talk to this issue and have information about plastic straws. Just two quick facts, there are half a billion disposable plastic straws used every day across the country, that's a lot of straws, that's enough straws to fill a hundred and twenty-seven school buses, so just, just a thought there, and that's why I'm here. I, I think that it's important, you know, the benefits generally of plastics reduction is, is really becoming, I think, pretty self-evident, and the other statistic I wanted to mention is that by 2050, the predominant science is telling us that there'll be more plastic in the ocean than fish. So with that said, I, I support the study of this, where there's obviously things to balance and weigh out, and thank you.
I just a question, I mean, that is a concern to everybody, but there, there, people with disabilities could be affected by this. I mean, how do you intend, what do you see in this area here?
I, I think there's paper straws, there's metal, bamboo, silicone, pasta, and glass, also folding metal that fits into a keychain, so there's a lot of options, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not saying that I support the motion in its form, there isn't a motion yet, we're just looking at studying it, and, and I think we should study it.
Okay. Councilor Kennedy?
Mr. Mayor, I think you bring up a good point, you know, the motion is to send it to the subcommittee, which I think is a worthwhile thing to do. I do think, though, that there are serious considerations for certain people that cannot drink out of a, a regular glass and that require a straw, and I would imagine that, that there are some people that a paper straw just wouldn't do it for them, and so, some consideration, you know, when the discussion that the subcommittee may have, that this is sent to the subcommittee, that would have to be, I think, part of the discussion, and how that would all enter into it. But however, you know, I was happy to second the motion, and I do think it's, it's worthwhile having the subcommittee at least discuss it and weigh the pros and cons of it before bringing it back to the city council with a ultimate recommendation.
Thank you. Councilor Sorrelli, then Councilor Noon?
Hi, yes, I, I, the reason why I am bringing it to subcommittee is to review and have a robust conversation with regards to the straws, and, and I do know that, for example, hospitals, they rely heavily on, on plastic straws for their patients drinking water while taking medication, so there is, there is that, and I, I understand. I, I just, I would like to move forward with, with the conversation, and that's, and that's the goal here. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do support to send it to the subcommittee, the environmental subcommittee for study, because I want to, I want to know the pro and con of it before I make my decisions, but just to send it to the subcommittee to study or to have a discussion on it, I would support that, so that I can learn or weigh the pro and con on this issue.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. You know, I don't really object to this motion, but tonight we sat here and we got this facilities report. Um... There's major issues going on with the school department, and we've had issue after issue that we've been, haven't resolved with motions and motions and motions. So I just think that it's time for the council to focus on bigger city issues. There's a little bit of, we've talked tonight about, you know, instances where hospitals need these straws and certain people need the straws. So I don't want to say that we're going to waste our time discussing this, but I think there's more issues in the city that need to get done by this council and resolved before we keep going on with issues like this. So I'm not going to vote for this tonight. I just think that one example, getting the doors secured at the school would be a bigger issue to do than discussing plastic straws. We went ahead and we did the ban on plastic bags, but yet again, we banned somewhat, plastic bags. So either you do it all or you don't. And if we're going to get serious about plastics, then that's a whole discussion on all plastics. But I think we have bigger issues to address. And to finish up, you know, I've been, I've got motions on for two or three years just trying to get locker rooms at the police station painted, trying to get things at the fire department done. So to this, you know, let's finish some projects. Let's get some things done, and then we'll move on to issues like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Sorillo.
Hi, yes. This, the environment is a big issue. And on March 26 of 2013, the City Council approved the Sustainability Lowell 2025 Plan. It was unanimous by counselors Rodney Elliott, Ed Kennedy, John Leahy, Martin Laurie, Bill Martin, Joseph Mantonka, Rita Mercier, and Vesna Noon. Mayor Patrick Murphy was absent that day. So I feel that the environment here in Lowell and leaving Lowell in better environmental condition for future generations is a big deal. I feel it is very important. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
And I feel the environment's important too, but banning everything isn't the way to do it. Pick up your garbage, clean up your messes, take care of your space. That's the way to deal with stuff like this. Let's deal with the issues at hand. Let's get some things accomplished. Let's start kicking issues down the road. Let's do some things this year. Get the schools in order, get the city in order. That's the way I feel.
Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If this motion passes, I would suggest that you invite the Commission on Handicap to that meeting. And I think that there is nobody in this room that doesn't believe the environment is extremely important. But to say, to take a look at what Mr. Leahy has said, Counselor Leahy, there are a lot of issues that are facing us right now. I mean, we have people right now that don't want to be shot at, in their homes to be shot at. We have, we have people trying to move from one place to another, having tremendous traffic problems, parking problems, economic development. We've got a real problem with opioids. And there are so many different things, projects, that we have to be dealing with. And, you know, it's just like, Mr. Mayor, anytime we go into an organization, what we do is we have to assess the organization. We have to assess the assets and the liabilities. And from there, we have to either, we have to take the liabilities and to improve on these liabilities. We, when we look at the city of Lowell, this is what we have to do, or any municipality. We have to take a look at our problems and prioritize what is, where is the time to be put? You know, the city manager right now, the city manager and her team, needless to say, is limited with man and woman hours. And I think it's important that we, you know, going forward, we do have to address these major problems. And I will, at this particular point, I will vote for it just to see what the study is or what comes out of it. But as far as banning it, I, well, I kind of hesitate at this point unless there's tremendous evidence. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call.
Counselor Milhanazal.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Sorillo.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
No.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
No.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Seven years.
All right, thank you. We're going to go back to motion responses. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Mercier.
I didn't realize, but the chief is here in regards to my motion. And I don't have that last page that tells you the motion is...
10.8?
Eight. 10.8.
We'll take that out of order. As everybody concurs. Counselor Mercier requests the manager to provide a report regarding latest shooting in the city, including the cause of the shooting, whether drugs or gang-related preventive steps being done to resolve the violence. Need a second? My Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm concerned about the real issues involving the city, and I think one of the top issues that has my concern is the shootings that we're hearing about on a more frequent basis. And I wanted to know, what is the cause of all these shootings? Is it drugs? Is it gang wars? Is it perhaps both? All I know is that it is frightening. We are once again making a name for ourselves. People will not be wanting to come to Lowell fearing that we are not a safe city. But I will tell you this, and I don't want to frighten people more than they probably already are, but it just shows the magnitude of concern, and that's why I made this motion. In one incident, I know for a fact that the perpetrators were using 7.62 machine gun bullets for an AK-47. These are high round bullets. Police bullets stop at the door, but these 7.62 bullets go through the door and then some. This is a very serious issue. And I'm turning on the radio, and I'm hearing this so frequently that it's unacceptable. The police made an arrest for the shooting of July 19, and that was great. And I'm not saying they're not working hard. They certainly are. But we have to send a message that this is a frightening scenario, and it will not be tolerated in our city. Not so much of the part of the police, but the part of the perpetrators. I don't want them to get away with this. I know how difficult it is. That's why I say, in key areas of the city, we should be putting cameras in these areas. We hear the streets all the time. We can't risk innocent bystanders to be put in harm's way. Lowell is a destination city, not the wild, wild west. We can't allow our police to be matched up with high-powered guns, putting our officers in harm's way. So what is the plan? What will be done to stop this? And I don't think that I'm going to have people watching that the chief's going to come up here and tell us of the plan. I understand that. But if we have to go in executive session and feel safe in knowing that things are going to be done, although I know that the people that are using the gun violence are probably not tuning into this council meeting, but I thought, and I thought the gangs were dissolving. We, for many years, didn't hear any more about it. It has been quiet for quite a while. Now it seems to be resurfacing. This is unacceptable, and I for one wanted to stop. Deliver a message. We will not accept this behavior. You know, you stop the food source when you have a shock, let's say. You stop the food source. I want to stop these gang members by telling them and arresting them and putting the full force of the law at them. Send a message that we're not putting up with this. You know, sometimes people are afraid to go through certain sections of the city for fear that they'll be shot at because they'll be in the line of fire. I know the chief is here. I wouldn't have taken this motion out of order, but he's here. Maybe he can explain something, because this is, I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm concerned about it. I'm frightened about it. This is a big issue. Shootings in the city, all the time I'm hearing it. It's becoming more prevalent, and I'm just not happy about it. And I'm not blaming the police department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to try to give you an outline of what's happening. You have to forgive me if I'm not too specific in some details. I don't want to give out any information that could compromise ongoing investigations or let some people know exactly what investigative techniques that we plan on using. The current violence that we're speaking about stems from a dispute between two groups in the city that are involved in street-level drug distribution. These groups formally aligned together, but they split up about a year ago for some reason that's unknown to us right now. Both groups are based around particular families that form the leadership of the groups. And the names of the groups can be very fluid, as the membership can be very fluid. But for purposes of this discussion, I'll identify the two groups. One group is known as the Cambodian Mob Family, and the other group is the Outlaws. Just based on the names of the groups, I caution anybody to draw any conclusions about the ethnic makeup of any of the members of this group. There's all types of people found in both groups. Back 15 years ago or more, the street gangs in Lowell were mostly youth-based, and any of the disputes seemed to be about territory, maybe, or just for no reason. You were a member of another gang, so you got attacked if you bumped into each other. Most of the street gangs now that we're dealing with are not built around youth membership anymore. These two particular groups that we're speaking about are made up of hardcore game numbers that have stayed in the gang life, and they're in their 20s and mostly in their 30s now, and they're heavily involved in the drug trade. We've had, well, before I get into the gunfire, the recent violence that erupted about a month ago, six weeks ago, we think, as I said, has its root in the drug trade, but may have been particularly triggered this time by two street robberies committed by members of the outlaw gang, where they stole gold chains from the CMF members. Since February, going back a little earlier, we've had 10 or 12 incidents of shots fired in the city. And we can attribute at least nine of those incidents to tensions between these two groups. A couple of incidents of particular concern, well, four incidents really of particular concern. On May 25, there was a shooting at Weber and Middlesex Street that involved a member of the outlaw gang who was involved in a drug deal with a customer who was not aligned with any of these gangs. And the deal went bad. The outlaw member shot this other gentleman. And glad to report that an arrest has been made in that case, and that perpetrator is currently in custody. The main incident of a few weeks ago was on June 18, probably triggered by one of the street robberies that I talked about that took place on June 17. On June 18, about 4:00 p.m., we had a report of shots being fired on Westford Street and Gibson Street. That turned out to be a confrontation, if you will, between the two groups. And one of the outlaw members was in a car that was traveling on Westford Street, and he was shot in the head from another vehicle. That person was taken to the hospital, but within 20 minutes, now again, this was an outlaw gang member that was wounded, within 20 minutes, there was a shooting on Smith Street, where a member of the CMF gang was killed and another member wounded. So we attributed that to retaliation. The troubling thing about the retaliation, of course, is that it happened in the first place. But within 20 minutes of the first shooting, they were able to respond to it, arm themselves, target another gang member location, and commit the crime. So that's very troubling. We have another incident on the 14th of July, approximately 12:00 o'clock at night at 28 Bonney Street. A car being driven by a woman who was the sister of a CMF gang member was fired on by a perpetrator who was hiding in the street as she pulled up to her house. She was not hit. The troubling thing about this particular incident was several children were in the car, ranging in age from six years old to 18 years of age. And again, less than an hour later, in retaliation, shots were fired at 57 Calvin Street at a home where a outlaw member was living. Again, very quick retaliation, within an hour. It's very troubling that they can target someone and arm up and commit this retaliation in such a short amount of time. On the 19th of July last week, there were shots fired at 70 West Fourth Street. That turned out to be a street-level marijuana deal that went bad. It was at noontime, and through great work by criminal section detectives, an arrest was made in that case. So the question then becomes, of course, what are we going to do about it? Police Department has made arrests in four cases. We've conducted two search warrants, one on Grove Street, one on Middlesex Park. We've recovered six handguns, a great quantity of crack cocaine, and ecstasy pills. And actually, in the Middlesex Park location, we found that there was a factory in the basement of the house where they were making the ecstasy. They actually had two pill presses. So we took out that manufacturing operation. In general, I can tell you that we are adding enforcement through stepped-up patrols by our gang unit. Patrol officers, detectives have been added. We are using what I hope is judicious use of overtime to increase all the units of the department. The focus of the entire department is on solving this problem. We are not going to stand for this, and we're not going to put up with it. In addition to the added hours and enforcement by our officers, we have contacted the probation and parole departments, and we are targeting any of these gang members that are on parole or probation for extra retention. We also have received additional help from the state police in the form of additional patrols. And we have also reached out to other law enforcement agencies and asked for help, and that has been provided to us. I can't go into detail about what we're doing about that, but we are getting help from other agencies. In addition, the Middlesex District Attorney's Office has a grand jury investigation going on into the violence and what we can do about it. So we have many tools in our law enforcement toolbox. We are going to use every one of them to try to address this problem. Also, last week, I met with members of my command staff, and I met with several community leaders from the CMAA, UTEC, Coalition for Better Acre, and Lowell Community Health Center. And these are all members of the community that we think have a good deal of influence. We asked them for help in both reaching out to the community to get information about what's going on, and also to reach out directly to these gang members in an effort to get them to stop the violence. We also have flyer the Lowell Highlands Neighborhood over this past weekend, asking people for help and to give us information. Tomorrow night, there is a meeting of the Lowell Highlands Neighborhood Group at the Boys and Girls Club that I will attend. And I hope that we get a big turnout from the neighborhood with that. And we are also in the process of scheduling meetings with the monks at some of the temples and some of the religious leaders, and hope that we can get to at least the gang members, family members, and try to influence them in that way.
Thank you so much. That's good. I know that we're doing something. It's just so frustrating when you wake up and you hear this on the radio every single day. It's just becoming monotonous and frightening, because you're going through a certain neighborhood, and you're wondering, are they going to be at war, and I'm going to be in the middle of it? You don't want to frighten people. You want people to come to the city. You know that they don't, the news media does not come from Boston down here, because we have a Folk Festival, and they're promoting the good things. we have a folk festival and they're promoting the good things. They hear the bad things that sell newspapers and TV ads and that's when I think, I know we're doing stuff. Thank you so much for that report. Thank you, ma'am, Madam Manager.
Counselor Elliott and Counselor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it is good to hear, Chief, what you are doing because we do just see reports in the newspaper and on the radio and, and elsewhere and it is disconcerting to, to folks and we need to reassure them that we are stepping up patrols. We're using overtime. We're using law enforcement trust money because it is drugs and it is gangs. It's not, it's not the same problem that we used to have years and years ago, but it's still, or it's not as prevalent, but it's, it still exists and it's not rampant, I should say. It's, it's very serious. The shootings, I don't know, Chief, you're doing the best that you can. We have, you know, we've put technology in place. We're, we're using surveillance. It's just, it's just, sometimes it's just hard to comprehend in this society that people just, you know, using guns so much. So I think this is important to follow up and perhaps the Public Safety Subcommittee at some point can meet to, on a regular basis to get this update and we can, you know, let, let the residents know that we're serious. We know it's, this seems to be more prevalent in the summertime when people are out and I don't want to belabor the issue, but it is important. It's an important motion to, to bring this forward and to have discussions about it to let people know. So I'll stop there.
Counselor Noon seconded it also.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Kennedy next.
Oh, sorry.
Thought we were done the motion, but I'd be happy to second. I think it's a good idea to send it to the subcommittee. So if somebody wants to include that in the motion, I think that's, that's not a bad idea, but I just wanted to speak when we're, when this is completed.
Okay.
I, I, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know that Counselor Elliott wanted this to, wanted to send this to the Public Safety Subcommittee. I know that a couple of weeks ago, I spoke to the clerk and the earliest one's going to be September 11th. That's, that being said, I know that before then, I know that, I know Chief, interim Chief Webb, you know, I know the manager is looking, hopefully finalize who's going to be the next chief by the end of August, I believe. But for now, I know that Chief Webb indicated that there's a step up in gang unit. I was wondering how many member on, on the unit for now? The number of, in the gang unit, the number of visual detective?
We have approximately half a dozen, four officers and two supervisors.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. That's all.
All right. Counselor Conway then Counselor Millenazza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly to the Chief, thank you very much for that report. It, it certainly is, as Counselor Mercy has said, it's, it's a very disturbing report. You know, back a few weeks ago, I remember downtown, there was some kind of a shooting at 5:30 or 6 o'clock and, at, at night where people have mentioned it numerous times. They said, geez, this isn't like 3:00 o'clock in the morning. This is 6:00 o'clock at night. And needless to say, people are very nervous about it because you never know what's going to happen between these two groups. Just a couple of quick questions. Are they, these gang members, are they coming in from other cities or is it, is it really located in the city itself? Are they bringing other people in?
They're, it's really based in, around Lowell residents. Once in a while, we do find members that come in from other cities. These two gangs, we're talking about tonight, that's really not so much the case. There are a couple of other gangs that have a loosely-based national membership, particularly in Philadelphia and in several cities in California. These two groups don't seem to be part of that, but even these Lowell members have spread out to other New England cities.
I, I think that what's disturbing about it is the fact that, you know, going back years ago when we had our issues with, with gangs, they, they tended to be more of the teenagers and, and now we're, as you have mentioned, we're, we're talking about a completely different level. You know, I think this was a level of, of gang members that used to be out in the western part of the country where that's where the older gang people were. Now, all of a sudden, we're finding that people in their twenties or thirties or whatever are becoming gang members. Counselor Elliott mentioned something about, I believe, having safety task force, safety meetings, subcommittee meetings on a regular basis. Now, I, I'm wondering, naturally, these subcommittee meetings always take place here. Is it possible that we could have these subcommittee meetings in different parts of the city so that we let the public know that, you know, we're, we're obviously interested in solving the problem? We're going right to the, right to the community, right to the neighborhood? Is that something that's possible?
Yes. Counselor Noon.
I think I like the idea very much, Counselor, you know, Conway. I think, you know, if we do that, then we do not need to wait until September 11th. We can do that before that. We can do as soon as maybe next week or week after. I, I think it's a great idea to take the, the subcommittee to the neighborhood. I, I like the idea very much.
I, I think perhaps it might be a good idea of the city manager and the police chief get together and find out where, where these, where would be the, the most effective spots that you could have those meetings and you people decide. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Millenazza.
I just quickly, thank you, Chief, for the, for the report. It's an important motion and I'll certainly support sending it to the Public Safety Subcommittee. Without getting into too much detail because obviously some of these are still ongoing investigations, but over the past four or five months, has the partnership between your department and UTEC been helpful in any regards as to the, you know, half a dozen shootings that we have, have had?
Yes, Counselor, and thank you for giving me the, the out and not going into too much detail, but UTEC has been a great resource for us.
Okay. Great. Thank you. The other, the only other thing I would say is that as difficult as that report was to hear, other communities are dealing with gangs like the MS-13 or whatever they are, national gangs and gangs. And honestly, I'm certainly hopeful that that would never happen in, in our community and if it ever did happen, we'd be looking at a gang unit three times the size that we have, have today. So again, I congratulate the Chief for getting the arrests and the subpoenas and the warrants and so forth because it really takes a lot of patrols, if you will, are feet in the ground to make sure that this happens and gets done correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Millenazza. Counselor Serrano then the city manager.
I'm good. Thank you.
City manager.
Thank you. Just, just quickly, I did want to, and I thank Chief Webb for being here. Normally, as you know, we wait till the next meeting to have a report in, in response to a motion, but given the issue and given the break that we will be looking at was the reason that, you know, Chief Webb did come tonight to speak to the council. And as you heard, there aren't, there are details that he cannot divulge publicly, but I can assure you, based on my conversations with the chief and, and his whole command staff, this is their number one priority. And I do want to commend the police department for having made arrests recently and including arrests in and around that shooting that took place on Merrimack Street in the early evening, the first day I started as city manager. And so there has been very good detective work that's ongoing and again, I think it is important to advise the council and stress to the public that there is zero tolerance for this nonsense with these gangs. It is being taken very seriously and the police department is going to address this in that manner. So I just wanted to share that with the council and, and giving updates to the subcommittee. We'll work with, with the committee and the police department as to when and where those should take place.
Chief Webb, okay. Counsel, Counselor Lee.
Chief, you had mentioned there's a neighborhood subcommittee tomorrow night on this?
There's a neighborhood group meeting, the Lowell Highlands Neighborhood Group.
Okay. And where are they meeting? Do you know?
That's at the Boys and Girls Club.
At what time?
I think it's at 6:00 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Chief Webb, a couple of questions. First of all, I mean, we acknowledge as a council, you people are doing a great job. But Counselor Conway and myself, when we were at the high school, we were facing what you described before. We had a number of middle school children, gang involved, coming into the high school. That was how the gangs entered Lowell High School and we had to deal with that cycle going through. And we went after the leadership and once we went after the leadership, this did stop a lot. It's different now. You're dealing with an older gang, but is that, is it possible to deal with the leadership in some way? In other words, bring them in to make them aware that Lowell's not going to be an inviting place or consequences will be even stricter? Do they follow that at the, we were dealing with 17-year-olds. Now you're dealing with what, 22 to 26-year-old in a sense? What's the, what's the?
There is a, there is one group that perhaps is a little more approachable and we are making efforts to, to reach out to them. The other group is more violent and shows no interest in any type of outreach or any type of cooperation at all, so.
Even, even if their leadership is being threatened by, you know, you're not going to be here, you know?
Well, without going into too much detail, let's just say that they're going to feel the heat from some of our law enforcement tools very shortly.
Okay. There's another issue. I mean, if, you know, you watch television, you know, Counselor Mercy brought up this motion. It's the correct motion to bring up because our constituents are watching this and they read in the paper, they listen on the radio and they hear about these issues. But if you think about it, Boston's done a very good job in their crime and their issues and deal with crime. But the other night, someone was shot right in front of Symphony Hall. There was a young girl killed, you know, on a main street in Cambridge. It's a woman shot in her home in a nice area in Revere. So this, I mean, this is, I mean, sometimes you wonder, are you hearing more because communication is better than it was before or is this a cycle that as officers you're dealing with? In other words, we, we're seeing a spike not only in Lowell, but literally everywhere. And I'm looking at things that are out of the north. I mean, this is not a shooting in the back streets of Dorchester, right in front of Symphony Hall, you know? A murder on a main street in Cambridge, not a side street, you know, type of situation. Is there any way of addressing that?
I think on one hand, you might be correct. We do seem to hear about things a lot more often now because the news cycle is 24 hours a day and, and the technology is such that these news stations are right on the scene with a, a live camera right away to, to get the news out there. As they say, if it, if it bleeds, it leads. They, they want to get the story right out. On the other hand, I think of crime rate in general is down, not only here in Lowell, but all around the country. It, it seems to me that some types of violent crime are up. And as far as the, the handgun violence goes, not to, to show my age, but over 35 years ago, when I started on the police department, for an officer to come across a handgun was rare. If, if an officer recovered the handgun, that would be the, the talk of the station for a few months because it was so unusual. Now, an officer recovering a handgun during his course of duty is, yeah, what's, so what else is new? Happens every day. So the amount of firearms that are out there in society is overwhelming compared to what it used to be.
Okay. Oh, so thank you for, for that response. Counselor Kennedy, do you want? All right. We're all set with that motion. Thank you. Counselor Kennedy.
If there's no objection, can we suspend the rules in order to take item L in 5.1 out of order?
LTC Broadcasting is seconded by Counselor Mercy. Madam, Mr. Kennedy, do you want to speak on that for us?
This was in response to a motion that I put in and, and actually, I think Counselor Conway alluded to, to, to the situation a few minutes ago. The way it stands right now is most people want their subcommittee meetings to be televised, although they don't have to be televised. And so if they're televised, they need to be here in the council chambers. And so the council chamber is only available once or twice a week generally because it, there are other meetings that are conducted here. And so as Counselor Noon pointed out several minutes ago, the Public Safety Subcommittee has to wait until the middle of September before it can have a meeting because of that reason. So several weeks ago, I put in a motion that asked for the city manager to look at the feasibility of putting a, putting cameras in the mayor's reception room so that the mayor's reception room could be used as a venue for subcommittee meetings. But furthermore, as you've come to know, Mr. Mayor, the mayor's reception room is also a venue for several different events that go on that the mayor hosts over the course of, over the course of, of the year. And so those events would be able to be televised as well if there were cameras in the mayor's reception room. And I, I just think it, it makes a lot of sense. You know, municipal government is very busy. There's a lot of meetings. There's a lot of different boards that have meetings and so if we can add another venue where we can have televised meetings, I think that that's a good thing. I think the initial report that came back from the manager's office indicate that, that the cost was going to be somewhat exorbitant, but I have since then heard from people at LTC that it can be done for a much more reasonable price, cost.
Wendy Bloom here? Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councilors and manager for welcoming me to speak. First of all, I just wanted to say that I so much appreciate the city's commitment to transparency. It really is wonderful that you want to broadcast all of your meetings. I think it's so important for democracy and, and for the city. And I also appreciate that you want to expand your transparency by having even more meetings in the city, in the mayor's reception hall. And we have done research to find out how much that might cost and LTC is willing to spend a good portion of its Comcast capital funding this year to purchase a system for the mayor's reception hall that would be a portable system that would include three robotic cameras on tripods and a switcher so that one staff person could operate all three cameras, similar to in here, which has four cameras. And we would be willing to do that. And what we really like about the portable system is that you can move the room around. It's such a flexible room. You wouldn't be locked down to certain positions. Also, when we are done taping, we would just totally take all of the equipment out and lock it in the room we have over here. And the other thing is we could take out these cameras and the whole system to other locations for meetings in the community. So we'd be happy to do that. So that would be no money for the city. We would have to negotiate with the manager's office about staffing because it would require hiring more staff to do, but I hope that you'll go ahead and, and approve that. And then eventually, I'll just put in a plug for, we really would like to in the next year or so, update this room to high definition as well. The, the equipment in the other room is really quite old and ready to be replaced.
You want us all in high definition? We may not want that.
I do.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I threw you to Wendy. So let's say that we're on 99 filming the city council's subcommittee, let's say, and there's a subcommittee meeting going on simultaneously in the mayor's reception room. What channel is that going to be on?
Well, it might not go live. We only have the one municipal channel, so it would be able to be taped and played another time or, you know, it's something that we can talk about, but we do have programming on the other two channels going on at the same time.
Okay. Counselor Lee.
Thank you. I'd like to get more information on this. I'm just, so I mean, isn't this something that we used to have the high school do? Like Jack Bernard would come over with students and, and do the filming and they had all the equipment? I mean, it may not go out live, but it's been filmed.
I'm not sure. Not in the last, not since I've been here that I know about.
This is very confusing. We don't have enough money to fund this at the high school where kids learn this and it's a career, but we can find money to buy cameras, you know? We've got to put our price. We've got to put our priorities in order here. So I'd like to, I don't know where we go with this. Can we discuss it and see what we're doing with this?
Madam Manager?
To you, to the council. Um, what, uh, the board of LTC has, has, um, agreed to spend their money, not, not city money, to purchase these portable cameras. And so I want to commend LTC in, in working as a partner in this. When we first, um, came back with the report, it included replacing all the cameras in here, uh, rewiring and putting cameras, permanent cam, permanently stationed cameras and wiring that would be required down in the mayor's reception room, which was cost prohibitive, um, initially. And so, but LTC took up the issue and Wendy Bloom brought it to her board, and they did agree to purchase the cameras out of their budget. So, uh, so it's not a situation that we're spending city dollars on purchasing these cameras. So it's really a win-win for, for the city to have the opportunity to have other location to film. As far as the schools, it's my understanding that when the students did, it was, had, in connected with school meetings or school, um, issues, but not city council subcommittees or such. And this would address city, the filming of city council subcommittees or other events in the mayor's reception room or, or elsewhere, as Wendy has said, uh, because they will be portable, these cameras.
Right. But when we say Comcast money is, how does that work? Didn't you say Comcast money?
Uh, yes. Let me, let me have Connor address how the Comcast distribution works, which is separate from, but let me turn this over to.
Percentage?
Turn it over to Connor.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Manager. The, the funding that we're talking about is already existing, uh, budget funds for LTC as part of their contract. There's an annual operating amount that goes to LTC pursuant to the contract as well as a, a capital, um, a capital payment each year. So what we're talking about is monies that were already planned to go to LTC. LTC would use all of a particular year or a, an accumulated portion over a number of years. So there, there are funds that would have been going to LTC in any event. This is not an additional amount of money for this purchase.
So it's not that Comcast money that we?
It, it, the original source of the funding does come from Comcast, however.
All right. So, and who would we be hiring? What are you talking about, hiring people, staff?
Well, LTC would, would hire freelancers probably to cover extra meetings. And that would be outside of the contract.
I just thought this is stuff we were using the high school for. There've been high school students filming different things for us. And, um, I mean, we can do whatever we want, but it just, you know, to wipe out the, the situation that we had at the high school seems like a real shame. These kids were doing it for, for free, to learn, to get educated.
John, the intent is?
Now we're talking about hiring people.
Intent is to return that program back to the high school. But it's really two different programs because they're.
Well, it is and it isn't. But we, we had Jack Bernard over there filming things for different projects, so, all right. Thank you.
But there's some more permanent basis for the city, for the city council. Any further discussion, Council Kennedy?
I would just, uh, as a result of the discussion that we've had, I would like to, to move that we requested the city manager work with LTC on the installation of cameras in the mayor's reception room.
All set?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
All right, we have a number of motion, uh, responses here. Yes?
Before we move on, just a quick question. Do, do we have an estimate of the staff cost? Um, and, and where that would come from?
We, we, well, Wendy may, I'm not sure. We haven't had a discussion about that.
You haven't had the discussion. I, I think it's good. We, we're always trying to, you know, get this room. I just want to make sure that we're not going to have all this equipment and then it's going to sit there, which.
Wendy may want to address that, but.
That's okay, we can do it.
We, we can purchase the equipment for under thirty thousand dollars. Which is within our capital budget for this year.
Okay. And then staff?
Well, staff is additional.
To you or to the city or?
Well, it would be city-operated, so we would hire freelancers.
For instance, these individuals get paid through the city that do these meetings now?
Excuse me, say that.
The people that, the individuals that operate this equipment now and other meetings, they get paid?
We have a contract with the city to provide municipal programming, and that includes the salaries of people who do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, back to, uh, response A, acceptance of Rovina Street. My Councilor, uh, Mercy, you all set with this motion?
Uh, I just want to say that, uh, they're going to prepare, uh, the necessary documents over the next four months because I think it's not an accepted street. So if we can proceed with doing that, that'd be fine. Yes, thank you.
All set? Thank you. Do not enter sign Merrill Drive, Councilor Cirillo?
Hi, yes. Um, I, I think that the residents of Merrill Drive are going to be very thrilled. But I just want to clarify that on the hard, on the hard copy, that it doesn't show the commercial vehicles, but there will be commercial vehicle signs at the top and bottom.
Madam Manager?
Uh, just, um, uh, just for clarification, there is a vote on the agenda tonight, uh, set seven point one, which deals with sixty-day trials. In the vote, um, as far as Merrill Street, the, it, there, it is twofold. One is for a do not enter sign on, on Roger Street at Route thirty-eight. And at the top of Merrill, it is, uh, no commercial vehicles entering. So that's part of the vote that's coming up later on.
Yes, thank you so much.
Right, that's right.
Council Kennedy?
Yeah, I, I just think, given the report, that, um, the signage is going the wrong way. In other words, I think what's dangerous is to come down Merrill onto Route thirty-eight, especially because of the bend. But I don't think that it's particularly dangerous to go up Merrill. And so I think the, the recommendation is to do a sixty-day trial of having Merrill be a one-way street, but going the wrong way. I should think it would be one way going up, not one way going down. And so I, um, I don't think that I will be supporting the seven, seven point one when it comes up. That's all that I just want to say. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
I was just going to say, the traffic engineer is here if anybody wanted to.
I, I spoke to the traffic engineer about this earlier today and, um, and I, you know, this is sixty-day trial, and so for sixty days, we'll see how it works. I, it's just my opinion that, um, that it should be one way going up, not down.
Right, traffic engineer. Spawn.
Um, good evening. I'm Natasha Vance. I'm the transportation engineer for the city of Lowell. I did speak to Councilor Kennedy this morning. Um, the motion from, um, Councilor Cirillo was based on a citizen request for traffic going up from Roger Street, for a do not enter sign going up as opposed to going down. Um, when we went and looked at it, it's a very steep street. It's very narrow. It has a little curve in the middle of it. It's definitely not appropriate for commercial vehicles in either direction. And just to clarify, it will be posted for no commercial vehicles in both directions, not, not just from the top or the bottom, but for the entire street. Um, the other concern we had was for plowing in the winter, that it would be a very difficult plow up, up the hill. So, um, and the, I did speak to, um, several residents who were interested in preventing cut-through traffic. There's a lot of traffic on Roger Street that's cutting up to Fairmont. And, and that was the reason for putting the, um, sign at the bottom. But as you say, it's a sixty-day trial, and if it doesn't work, they'll let us know.
I, I use the street to cut through. That's exactly what I use it for. If there's too much traffic on thirty-eight, I'll go left up Merrill. And it's, it's just, um, you're going to wreck that on me for sixty days.
Sorry about that.
Hey, Council Lee and Council Mercy?
You had your hand first. Okay. Um, sure, I was going to say the same thing. I think this is one of those issues that we should just kind of leave it alone. We, I don't know, we have someone who actually lives on the street. I don't know if she registered to speak, but you did, may have wanted to say something if it's okay. Um, she lives on the street, she has knowledge of it. But I, I think this is one of those issues we should just leave alone, but if you don't mind.
My name is Emery Buzik, and I live at nineteen Merrill Drive. I'm right in the middle. And as you know, Merrill Drive is a very short street. However, um, officially, there are only two houses on Merrill Drive, Mayan and thirty-two Merrill Drive. But there are three houses on Roger Street, three properties, whose only access to driveways for their properties is via Merrill Drive. My neighbor across the street has a Fairmont Street address. Her only access to her house is via her driveway, via Merrill Drive. And I have no issue with traffic going up and down Merrill Drive. Um, in the winter, actually, I would prefer to go down Merrill Drive. I put my car in low one and let the car go down itself. Um, I do have, um, an issue about, um, having to not, um, be able to go up the hill. Uh, I cannot picture myself going down Merrill Drive and trying to take a left onto Roger Street any time of the day because of traffic going in both directions. As far as commercial vehicles, um, that could be an issue. The only time that I really recall a lot of commercial vehicle travel is when there was an issue on Lawrence Street, a police issue, and there ended up being a crash right by Shed Park. And police directed city buses, commercial vehicles, trucks. That was a mess. But I've owned the property for over thirty years. I've never had any problems. It doesn't bother me to go up or down. Um, I do want to say that, uh, if there was a problem where the, uh, police or fire had to go up Merrill Drive, and they have in the past, if that were to be prohibited, that could be a problem. I know that, uh, trash collection goes up and down Merrill Drive. And, um, uh, as I've said, um, the, the police do all the time, you know? And I have talked to at least one of my neighbors who feels the same way I do. Obviously, I can't speak for them, but, um, those are my reservations at the time. And, um, I think I would probably, um, be very concerned if this were to be a permanent thing. Because again, over thirty years, it has not been an issue for me. Thank you.
Can I just finish? I just want to thank you for waiting. I know it's been a long night. So, um, again, you know, I just, when this comes up, I'm not going to support it. And I've heard from a lot of people in the neighborhood. It's, it's a, more of a neighborhood street than a cut-through for commuters.
Council Mercy?
No, I didn't, I just wanted to, well, um, a sixty-day trial is just that. It's a trial to see if it's feasible. And if there's any objection, they look at it again. But it's just a sixty-day trial.
Council Milonazo? What's that? Okay. All right. Next, we have trees along four ninety-five, Route forty-five. Council Mercy?
Um, it's all set. Thank you so much.
Pickleball courts. That was Council Leahy, Council Mercy and myself. Any response, Council Mercy or Council Leahy?
Pickleball, you know, my favorite motion. Oh, yeah. Now, um, sure, the only thing I wanted to say on that is I spoke to the manager today and, um, distributing the courts around the city would be a great thing. We wouldn't, well, my suggestion along with a couple of other people would be to leave the Lowell High Courts alone, um, do the two courts over on the Boylston side of Shed Park.
Yeah, that's right.
But distribute them throughout the city would be a great idea. And the only other thing people have been asking me is if, um, by the next meeting, if you could, if you possibly could have a timeline. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. The, um, the report suggests certain, um, courts around the city, three different locations. But it also, uh, is forwarding this recommendation to the next Board of Parks meeting so they could take it up. I, I know there are people who are concerned about the timing and, and when this would be done. So the next step would be, uh, if it was the council's, uh, wish, to send it to the Board of Parks so they could look at this as well.
Council, Council?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that's a, I think it's a good idea to have it, the, the courts that are used for the boys' and girls' tennis, that they, they keep those intact. On the, uh, on the Boylston Street side, there's two, uh, there's two courts there. Uh, back a number of years ago, uh, I asked Council, um, Mercy to put a motion on to have those two courts dedicated to Dennis Kruziak. And, uh, he was, um, quite a tennis player. And also, um, I was very fortunate to be his friend and actually his partner for, uh, tennis partner for a couple of years. And I will say that, uh, he, um, he was also an incredible racquetball player. So I think the whole idea of, of, uh, taking those front courts and also making, uh, not just tennis, but also this, this pickleball, I think that he'd probably get a kick out of it. So I, I certainly encourage that those, those two courts would be the place to put it. Thank you.
Madam Manager, I wasn't sure, in looking at the reports, uh, we, I had also asked if some of the, uh, schoolyards that have hot top, you know, good flat areas, has that been considered at all?
Um, for, for pickleball?
Yes.
Uh, I don't think so. I think it was looking at the existing tennis courts, which could be restripped and be used for dual purposes because they were very, very similar, but you'd still have a court. But I don't believe they looked at any schoolyard. But there, there was mention of the six, um, portable pickleball sets that the Parks and Recreation had purchased some years ago that could be used at the senior center or used indoors in addition to the courts that we're talking about.
Mr. Conway's starting a team, I believe. You're starting a team, I believe?
Yeah, you'll be the first to play, right?
Okay. No, thank you for all that information. I think it's, be well received. All right, the Hobbie Park improvement. Council Cirillo?
Hi, yes. Thank you for the report. I'm actually very excited to see that the over thirty-year-old equipment will be replaced in twenty twenty and, um, with hopefully some grant money. I think this is a good thing, so thank you.
Okay. Next, water detection in municipal buildings. Council Kennedy? Any?
Agreed.
All set? Pollard Library Roof Repair, Council Leahy?
No, I just, has anyone been over there, Madam Manager, to make sure there's no damage from the open?
Yeah, uh, Jim Donison isn't here, but Jim Troop is to address the repair on the roof.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Counselor, the roof is watertight. Uh, the pieces that have torn off are more decorative than, uh, anything that protects the water from getting into the building. So, uh, we're confident that we'll be able to make the repairs and make sure that it's back to its original condition.
All right. Can we just, in the future, I don't know, I had heard that a fire truck was used to cut it off because it was flapping on the wind. I don't know if that's true or not, but, um, just, these are things that, you know, should be addressed quicker than they are. I don't know, maybe it's just because we hire one high, um, uh, lift per year, but, you know what I mean?
Sure.
It, it looks like it's leaking up there, but I take your word that it's watertight.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Pedestrian Safety City Hall, Council Leahy? Is it yours? Did we do the Pollard roof?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that, if there's no objection, the individual motion makers can speak on them. But I'd like to make a motion that we accept all the reports as reports of progress and place on file.
Second.
Second. Okay. Does anybody want to speak on any issue?
I just want to speak on the one that you're on right now, Mr. Mayor. And we're talking about, uh, in addition to the DPW and Landon Buildings, they'll perform a window repair at the downstairs bathroom in the library. Because I added that on to his motion at the time, and they addressed that, that it'll be done in early August. So I did hear some talk about it. Are we still going to put a grate over that window or were we talking about a grate?
That's what, um, I don't know whether Jim Troop has information on that, but Commissioner Donison indicated that that was going to be the appropriate way to deal with it so it doesn't get re-broken on a regular basis.
Right.
Uh, and so that it would be more protected. And you still have glass in the window.
Are we still having that in mind to do that? Thank you.
I don't know, Mr. Troop, if you had anything?
Unfortunately, I don't know the progress of that repair, but I could send an email to the manager tomorrow to find out and update.
Jim Green is the individual who was dealing with this and said this would be the, the best solution for that particular location.
That's what I thought. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Council Conway?
Yeah, just very quickly on the traffic mitigation plan. Again, I want to thank the, uh, city manager and her staff in putting that together. And I think, uh, it, it's going to be very helpful, where the people will, will certainly see what is, uh, is coming up. is, is coming up, because, again, we obviously have some real issues with, with traffic, and hopefully this will clear up some of the, some of that information. Thank you.
Counsel Noon and Counsel Lehe.
Thank you, Mayor. There's two motion respond that I'd like to touch on. First is, I want to throw you to the managers, Middlesex Street and Wilder's intersection. Is that going to be, you know, on the traffic study on this, and as well as Westford and Wilder?
I believe the first one has already been addressed in a traffic study. Natasha Vance can address that, and then there was a question as to the second one. Natasha, if you can?
Please. Yeah, sure. Yes, again, Natasha Vance, Transportation Engineer. Yes, so a consultant did a study for the, for four signal, four intersections to see if they warranted a traffic signal. Westford and Wilder was one of those intersections, and it does indeed warrant a traffic signal. However, we had the funding to look at the design of those four intersections, and then were able to look at the finalizing design of only one of them. So, we have not done a traffic study for the Middlesex and Wilder intersection, so that would warrant a full traffic analysis to determine, like, traffic counts and a full-blown study to determine if a signal was warranted.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Also, on motion respond, I know that Cap, I mean, the, not Captain, the interim Chief, Chief Webb is here, respond to my motion regarding the Lowell Citizen Police Academy. I know that it's on, and now I learned that it's ongoing and has been very active, and the next one's going to be September of this year. I know it's open process now, and I know that the report also indicated that as reaching out to the community through us, Police Department, social media, as well as outreach to the neighborhood. I want to, I know that Chief also indicated that there'd been a relationship between the Police Department, UTech, and CMAs, and CBAs, and so on, that we may want to put out that message to them that we, if anyone interests, or anyone listening now, interest September's, it's going to be the next Citizen Police Academy. So, I want to thanks the Chief for the report.
Counsel Lehe.
On, could the traffic engineer just give us a recap of what they're going to do in front of City Hall?
Okay, so, again, as part of that transportation proposal, we had a consultant look at, this is part of our complete streets policy, looking at improving bike and pedestrian traffic in front of City Hall. So, this is, you know, it's a little bit complex, but essentially, we would be creating a signalized intersection at Cardinal O'Connell Parkway, and that would provide for a single pedestrian crosswalk in front of City Hall, as opposed to, right now, there are two on either corner of Cardinal O'Connell. There's a problem with some solar glare. Sometimes drivers can't see the pedestrians, and this is a very long stretch of an, of unsignalized road going all the way from Dutton Street all the way to Cabot before there's another traffic light. There's, there's a lot that this proposal does. It creates separated bike lanes, which creates a safe space for some of the bike riders in the city. It modifies the traffic flow around Cardinal O'Connell Parkway. There's a little bit of a confusion for drivers when they come to this four-way stop because people are stopping in, you know, kind of far away, and there's no loss in parking because of the diagonal parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that help?
Yep. Thanks.
We all set? All right. Any, Counsel Elliott?
There's just one motion on the signs on Middlesex Street, and that there is a request for action on it, so I move, the recommendation is to not take down the big steel signpost, but to repurpose them for solid waste and recycling news, and I think that makes all the sense in the world, so I'd like to make the motion that the city manager and direct DPW and/or the solid waste to repurpose those signs. It's not going to cost the city any money. According to the report, funds have been received, so considering the nature and the magnitude of our recycling and solid waste problem, I think it, I think that makes all the sense in the world, so I'd like to make that motion.
Second by Counsel Noon. All set? Okay. All right, I need a motion to accept and place on file. So moved. We're all set. This looks like a crossword puzzle tonight. Okay. Next, we go down to Communications. City manager requests out of state travel. Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next, we have vote accept gift of $250 from Laborers International Union of North America and Local 249 in support of Lowell Police Department and Community Program. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager behalf of the City of Lowell to accept a gift, Laborers International Union of North and South America, Local 429, of $250 for the use by the City of Lowell Police Department in support of Lowell Police Department's community programs, specifically 2018 Lowell Police Movie Night. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
All right, next, we have vote accept gift of all funds raised from crowdfunding Challenge Program by the Mass Development to enhance Kerewake Park. I need waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager behalf of the City of Lowell to accept the gift of funds raised from the crowdfunding and crowd get renting Challenge Program created by Mass Development to enhance Kerewake Park. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Elliott, second by Counsel Kennedy.
Mr. Mayor, do we, just a question, do we have any idea how much money we're looking to accept or raise?
It was a $25,000 match. Mass Development was putting up $25,000. The city, the crowdfunding was established to match that, and it actually exceeded the $25,000.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's now at $29,692.
Fantastic. All right, roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Okay, vote authorize the city council ratify small solid agreement between the city and the New Singular Wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second by Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Cirillo. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Okay, vote authorize the city manager execute license agreement to VYO Boston Incorporated 748 St. Church Parking. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to enter a license agreement with the VYO Boston Incorporated to use a portion of city-owned parking lot at 748 St. in the City of Lowell for church parking for congregation employees of VYO Band Boston Incorporated located at 66 Lakeview Avenue, Lowell, Mass., and for no other use. A motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Okay, vote authorize the city manager execute sidewalk seating license, Leo de Cafe, 108 Merrimack Street. Waive the full reading, the second reading by title. Authorize the city manager execute license agreement between the City of Lowell, City and La de Cafe LLC for use of portion of city property adjacent to the premise at 108 Merrimack Street for the purpose of sidewalk seating. A motion to adopt.
So moved.
Counsel Milonazzo.
I have, I also have a question.
Okay, so, move by, motion by, and second by Noon. You have questions, sir?
If I could throw you, Mr. Mayor, the city manager after the solicitor, I just want to get it on the record that this establishment at 108 Merrimack Street does not have the same issues that the petitioner had two weeks ago, when they were here before and they were denied in a nine-to-nothing vote. We don't have any type of issues before the license agreement or the ABC or anything like that with this.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Do we have a roll call? Roll call? Okay. Next, vote transfer.
Roll call.
No, we need the roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay, vote transfer $24,300 to fund contract for appraisal service. Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right, next, vote transfer $29,600 to secure funds for the right-of-way acquisition Route 38 widening. Waive full reading, second reading by title. Auto transfer $29,600 to secure funds for the right-of-way acquisition Route 38 widening. Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Okay, vote authorize the city manager execute license agreement to VYO Boston Incorporated 748 St. Church Parking. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to enter a license agreement with the VYO Boston Incorporated to use a portion of city-owned parking lot at 748 St. in the City of Lowell for church parking for congregation employees of VYO Band Boston Incorporated located at 66 Lakeview Avenue, Lowell, Mass., and for no other use. A motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Okay, vote authorize the city manager execute sidewalk seating license, Leo de Cafe, 108 Merrimack Street. Waive the full reading, the second reading by title. Authorize the city manager execute license agreement between the City of Lowell, City and La de Cafe LLC for use of portion of city property adjacent to the premise at 108 Merrimack Street for the purpose of sidewalk seating. A motion to adopt.
So moved.
Counsel Milonazzo.
I have, I also have a question.
Okay, so, move by, motion by, and second by Noon. You have questions, sir?
If I could throw you, Mr. Mayor, the city manager after the solicitor, I just want to get it on the record that this establishment at 108 Merrimack Street does not have the same issues that the petitioner had two weeks ago, when they were here before and they were denied in a nine-to-nothing vote. We don't have any type of issues before the license agreement or the ABC or anything like that with this.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Do we have a roll call? Roll call? Okay. Next, vote transfer.
Roll call.
No, we need the roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay, vote transfer $24,300 to fund contract for appraisal service. Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Mercia. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Kennedy.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Nine yeas.
All right, next, vote transfer $29,600 to secure funds for the right-of-way acquisition Route 38 widening. Waive full reading, the second reading by title. Auto transfer $29,600 to secure funds for the right-of-way acquisition Route 38 widening. Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
By Counsel Kennedy, second by Counsel Noon. Roll call.
Counsel Milonazzo.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Ms. Maris.
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Elliott.
Yes.
Counsel Lehe.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
All right, next, order sixty-day trial, waive the full reading, the second reading by title. So do you want to read off the thing, and we'll have the roll call on each one?
So I would move approval on the, on the sixty-day trial for the two ones on Lawrence.
Second.
And University Ave.
And University.
And University Ave.
Yeah, there were three of them. Repeat that, Mr. Clerk.
All right, so the motion is now by Kennedy, second by Elliot, to approve order on the sixty-day trial eliminating the Merrill Drive section.
Yeah, correct. Okay, roll call.
Council Milonazza?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, regarding Merrill Drive, I would like to move that we keep the sixty-day trial on prohibiting commercial vehicles, but that the street remain two-way.
Second. Second?
Second.
Like, like, Council Milonazza? Okay. Council, I'm sorry, Madam Manager?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure, because it was advertised the other way. I, I know when we were going to change it the last time, we were advised that we'd have to advertise what we were doing again, so if it changes, I guess that's my question to the, to the law department. I just want to make sure it's, it's correct.
No, I would agree. I have, can you, can you propose a new?
No.
Elimination or?
We're going to be doing two things. We're going to be making it one-way and prohibiting commercial traffic, so this would just prohibit the commercial traffic for sixty days, but eliminate the, the provision to make it be one-way for the sixty days.
Yeah, that would be acceptable if you change the motion to amend the vote. We wouldn't make, because I wasn't sure if it was a different sub principle.
Okay.
All right.
So that motion is on the floor already, right? Didn't we already make that motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just repeat the motion, we'll have the roll call.
Motion regarding Merrill Ave to keep commercial element on the sixty-day order and eliminate the, the one-way distinction.
All right, roll call.
Council Milonazza?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Council Cirillo?
No.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Elliot?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Leahy?
Yes.
Council Mercy?
Yes.
All right. We're going to reports of subcommittee. We already did the.
We did a report on environment.
Yes, I know. We, we did the educational partnership, so do you have a report tonight for the environment?
I do. We had a really great subcommittee with Mark Young and Mike Stower from the Water Department, and they produced an excellent report. Oh, sorry. Lowell Flood Damage Reduction System and Repairs and Accreditation. And it was attended by myself as chair, counselors Kennedy and Elliot. And there were a few speakers. Nancy Kelly, a resident, spoke, and Scar Laraman spoke, both residents, with regards to their flood insurance. And to make, cut this short, we produced two motions from that subcommittee meeting. The first one was request the city manager look into putting together a letter for the residents to state that the city of Lowell has redrawn the floodlines, that the resident can send their insurance companies. And then the second motion was to have the city reach out to Congress requesting a meeting with FEMA relative to expediting the MAC revision process. Can you just lay that in passing?
You all set?
I am, thank you.
Need a motion to accept both as a report of progress?
I would move that we, that the report be accepted as a report of progress and that we adopt the recommenda, the two recommendations of the subcommittee.
Okay, second by Council Noon. Thank you. We have next petitions, vote to property damage, motion to refer to law department for report and recommendation.
So moved.
By Council Kennedy, I mean Elliot, I'm sorry, second by Council Milonazza. Then we have 9.3, National Grid Verizon requests permission to install new pole located at 23 Holden Street. A motion to refer this to a public hearing of August 14th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Based on the motion made before, what do you wish to do with this?
Table it.
Table it. Do I have a second on that?
Table his table. Okay, second.[1608.15]